Like to participate in a prayer and then call our meeting to order thereafter. You'd like to stand and bow your heads? Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you to grace us with your presence in our community meeting this evening. We thank you for the blessings of freedom to meet safely with our staff, contractors, guests, and citizens, all with the purpose of bringing stability and strength for Archer in its future. Please intervene and help all of us attending tonight to act peacefully and with civil respect for each other as we discuss and act upon what is best for all within our community. We give thanks for all of our men and women in uniform throughout the world who defend our freedoms at home. Please be with their families and remain with them and provide them solace until their safe return home. We ask you to provide direction and intervention in the decision-making of our national leaders at this time to bring long-range resolution in our democratic government process. God, we ask you to help us to give all and every opportunity ahead of us. Even if we don't like what we are doing, we thank you that you have called us to this place and you will help us work with purpose. For it is, as we may remember in your word in Ecclesiastes, chapter nine, verse 10, "Whatever you do, do well; for when you go to the grave there will be no work or planning or knowledge or wisdom." Every day we wake up is a new opportunity to put everything you are into your work and for all of this, we pray in your holy name. Amen. Call this meeting to order at six oh one. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd join me. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Welcome Commissioner Green. Madam Althop, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor Hope, if we could please remove Agenda Item Number Three under New Business. We just have a few more things to add to the letter and then it will be brought before the Commission.
Okay.
And Mr. Attorney, did you have something we needed to remove off the agenda?
I was not told what their... Oh, I see why the... As far as Laura Hill needs to go out for bid, the... Arnold is waiting on the survey and the Board of County Commission, they are working on the letter which will be ready the next week. So I don't know if you want to take those off or not.
Okay. That's Old Business Item Number Two?
Yes, sir.
To remove that one?
Yes, please.
Until a complete package is prepared?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then... Item Number Three under New Business as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? For introductions, for our constituents in the audience and colleagues up here that may not know, the gentleman that's acting as our attorney this evening with Folsom Walker is Mr. Leonard Ireland. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Ireland.
Good morning, dear.
In keeping us straight, and also our special guest is Judge Ballard. Thank you for coming out in this cold weather and joining us to incorporate someone new and onto our dais. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
Still move. Second.
Motion for Commissioner Green, a second from Vice Mayor Iris Bailey. Any comments or questions from the dais? Any comments from the constituency in the audience regarding adopting the agenda? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Now he's like sign, hearing none, motion carries five zero, four zero, sorry. Okay. Special, next is Judge Ballard. If you would so honor us with the swearing in of our new colleague.
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioner, citizens, family members. Commissioner, if you come forward, please. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
Karen Fiori.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Florida.
And of the State of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold this office.
To hold this office.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the Archer City Commission.
Of the Archer City Commission.
On which I am now about to enter.
At which now I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Fiori, may I come up here? Sorry for the handwritten title. The tag. Yeah, we had to... The awards trophy company didn't get it to us in time, so sorry.
Thank you.
All right, next is our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve a consent agenda.
So move.
Motion from Vice Mayor Iris Bailey.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Marilyn Green. Any discussion, comments regarding Items One or Two in the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have quite a few questions.
Yes, ma'am. You want to... On both or just the bill payments or?
On both.
Okay.
Okay. So I want to start off with, last month I wasn't in attendance and I reviewed the... The transaction list. I sent staff a couple of questions in regards to what I was seeing on those transaction lists. I started seeing where there was some totals that don't actually match what's being cleared from the bank account. I know Deanna had mentioned that she was going to have the new, I'm not sure on her title, bookkeeper investigate some of those. I also inquired about what's missing from that transaction list. And you have to realize that that list that you're seeing is not complete at all. So there's quite a bit that you're not seeing, that you're seeing clearing your bank account. And so I questioned that. The answer I received was that staff is trying their best, they're trying to get caught up. But I think we need to probably put some hard dates to when we need these true-ups. And the last thing about last month, I also inquired about my Aflac public record request. And again, the response I got was that new employees being out sick, trying to still catch up. But I just want to remind everyone that that request stems back over five months now. Five months where all I had to do was go into the office, review a Aflac bill, see where the payments are coming out of the employees' paychecks. I was told many months now that Aflac is not paid by for the city. But I want everyone to know that for fiscal year '25, there was a total of $11,824 that came out of your checking account. And I don't know if that was being paid by the employee. So that is the only reason for that request is just to see the proof that the employee is actually paying for those and that it's not a city expenditure. Moving on to the transaction list for today. I have some questions and I'm hoping that we can actually get some answers from staff. I think that any transaction that's listed on here, that the staff should be able to answer it. So my first question is West Farms, there's two payments here for 582, both in the month of October. I'm assuming the second payment in October was for November even though they're both dated October? Would be my first question. Last month, the new bookkeeper for the Duke Energy put in the memo, which was great, the location of the charges. And then this month, the memo went to more like a description of the location. I would just ask that staff pick one or the other so that us that are trying to actually keep track of those, I can do apples to apples. So either like pick the description or pick like the the actual address, just so we can easily see it. Another thing, the transaction list never comes with a total. So this transaction list for the month of October totaled $28,628. As I mentioned, but you're missing transactions on that list. That's not a complete list of all your transactions for the month. So for the general fund, you see items moving out of your general fund for an additional $18,671. So those, $18,000, you're not seeing on that transaction list for October. So that's a lot. And so I have some questions about some of those. There's a check number four, five, eight, six for the amount of $1,600. I don't know what that's for. There's a real random number check starts with nine, nine, four, six, one, six, one, four for $237.73. Again, I don't know what that is. The new accountant, bookkeeper, I assume that individual was under the contract Robert Half, is that correct? Okay, so there's been a total of five or six transactions that have gone through under that title. So they've actually been paid out, cleared your bank account. However, your transaction list, you only have four. So you're missing two transactions, the amount of $1,200 right there. You have a Fols Walker payment of your $5,000 not on your transaction list. There's a Humana, Verizon, Clay, Grucom, Cox, those are all missing from your transaction list. There's an amount for $1,537. I question what that's for. And $2,208.58. And the last one in the general fund is $3,671.08. I'm just curious what those amounts are for because they're not on your transaction list. There's, looking at your bank statements, there's three payments to the Florida Department of Revenue and it's titled CUT. There's one for $75, $150, and $300. I'm just curious what those are. I don't know what the CUT stands for. If you could tell me what those are. So pay period ending one, or 10/1/25. The tax payment that you have listed went up $3,280 compared to other pay periods. So that's quite, their average tax payment per pay period looks like it's a little over $2,244, around that amount each pay period. And this one jumped up, so there must be a reason why. Either we had extreme lot of overtime, we had some payouts, vacation payouts, I'm not sure if that's possible. Okay, because that was a really big jump there. And the revenues that we're seeing hit the general fund kind of on a weekly, sometimes more than once a week. Small amounts, $1,000 here, a couple hundred here. Can you tell me exactly what it is? It makes sense why I would see transactions like that going into the water and utility fund. So you have your garbage payments, you have your your water payments. But I can't for the life of me think, well, what would be constantly being deposited into the general fund each week like that? And they're coded RBD deposits. Moving down to your water fund. So the water fund is missing transactions for the month of October in the amount of $17,518.20. So again, those are transactions that are coming out of your bank account, but you're not seeing them on a transaction list. So you're not sure what those are for. So an example would be your Waste Pro for over $8,000. Your two payments to Blue Cross, one for $3,800, one for $3,100. And then there's two transactions that I questioned under the utility fund. Check number three, two oh six for $2,000 and three, two oh five for $480.98, if I can get the answer for those. There's a payment for, it's titled $75,000 Elevated Park Project and the amount is for $3,263.50. I question what that is for. Then I also saw a 300 deposit in the utility fund. And 300 makes me believe that that's something probably like water or it's just seemed like a barely rounded number to be deposited into the utility fund. And then there's another large deposit in the utility fund for $4,018.23 and I'm curious what that's for. I see that the insurance claim for over $14,000 came in in your general fund and then you transferred it out to the water fund, which is appropriate. Thank you for that. And... So those are my questions surrounding the transaction and the bank statements at this time. If I can get those answers, that'd be great.
I might have to get with you because that was quite a bit and I don't know if I missed some of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Or do you know some of them? Do you know some of them?
Yes, I do.
That'd be great.
The RT sixes were late filing fees. So I submitted all those and now we're all up to date on RT sixes. So the man from FDR showed me how to go on the website and submit them.
Okay.
Okay. And yes, for the October, it's going to be more because we have the sick payouts. Those three of us had sick payouts.
So if I may, Mayor, I don't understand the sick payout. So you do accumulate it and so you're getting that on top of your normal 40 hours? Is that what's happening?
It's a separate paycheck. So we get 120 total hours for sick. So if you use less than half, you get paid out half of what's left in your balance. If you use more than half, you have to use it all or you lose it. That's why we have so many people that need to take off in August, September, so use their sick. But three of us just went and got payouts. We had too much, there was no way to use those like a month off or something crazy like that.
Okay, thank you.
The RBD deposits are remote bank deposits for the checks going through the scanner.
That one through the...
I'll have to check on the two, the check numbers you're talking about. The Elevated Park is two utility services. They clean and inspect our water tanks. And then when it came to all the bank statements, I was thinking you were still on the list. So yeah, that's what I'll have to ask you to probably tell me which ones you wanted from all the bank statements.
The Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's from the month of September, at the beginning of the month, paid in October 2nd.
Right, it's due the beginning of the month.
So that was September's billing.
Right.
And it was more than the one in, at the end of October because of the staff change.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
By $700 something.
Yeah, yes.
But two hit in one month, but one's for September and one's for October. Just pay the October on the 29th, whatever, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But as far as the bank statements, I'll probably have to re-listen to it because I didn't get all what you were saying.
And this format, landscape versus...
Yeah, I just downloaded it to Excel and printed it.
That's helpful and I think the conversation we had today, if I can just disclose that. Helping Ms. Ott along is, you know, the address is not as important as the name. So she's getting the acronym for like, Ms. Lopez asked about the Archer Community Center. That one address is the Archer Community Center, separate, not clumped together? I don't know if she's with us this evening or not, but...
Mayor, to the the comment that you download it to Excel, can you put a total on that so we can see the totals? Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because I do that myself. That would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lopez, regarding your question.
I'm looking at the agenda. Did we overlook approving the minutes?
She's not to that point yet. She's just in the billing.
We're in billing.
She, yes, ma'am, we're still on the consent agenda and the Commissioner hasn't approached us with any...
Okay, on the bills, I noticed that...
But not the consent, where is it?
Some of these items are, and one in particular was the one about the Archer Community Center.
Yes, ma'am.
And I show where City Hall Electric, September 11th through October 10th, 2025. The bill is 33539, am I right?
That's City Hall only.
That's City Hall only?
Yes.
Okay, it's not lumped together. So you pay that amount of money for City Hall for electricity?
Yes.
Yes, we do. That includes both sides.
Okay. And I'm glad to see though that you did sort of separated a lot of them on the bottom of this page by departments or whatever, so that's good. My interest here is that we do not lump the bills together again. I've been asking for that for quite some time. So the other thing... I had sent out an email and I said that, and I'm going, I still want this as a public records request. I am requesting the monthly bill for ACC for July, August, and September. I'm also requesting the bill for City Hall for July, August, and September. And if you included others in this bill, please provide that also.
Just Duke Energy?
The utility bills is your email request, Ms. Lopez, correct?
Yes, in other words...
And the ACC is separately listed here, it's just by address erroneously under Electric Pump House Number Two. That is the Archer Community Center. It has one single address.
Does it say Archer Community Center?
No, ma'am, but it will from this moment forward. That's what I just stated regarding your input.
That's exactly what I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
It's no way for me to know that.
Yes, ma'am, that's why we corrected that today in a review from your email.
Please let me finish. It's no way for me to know that unless you print it on this piece of paper.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't understand your language anymore. So that's all I'm saying is that, you know, we still are not putting the descriptions out there the way we should. When you have a bill or whatever, it should say Archer Community Center Toilet, whatever you want to put.
The acronyms are being reviewed with Mrs. Ott, so she puts the acronyms by the description. Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Fiori, if you'd like to continue with questions, you had questions about the minutes also or just the bills?
I have something about the minutes.
No, I don't have any about the minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you had a question about both. Was that your summary of requests regarding the billing?
Yeah, I'll just make one additional comment, though. I'm not going to approve these because, as I mentioned earlier, as a citizen, they need more backup and these aren't full statements of any sort and we don't know what we're approving up here. So before I can, I need answers to those questions before I'm going to approve. And as we catch up on these bank statements and these reconciliations, those should be coming back to this board for approval. So we have a whole 2025 that we're still waiting to see. And every month that we should be getting those, we reconcile this new month, please approve these. And that's how I think that that should be looking.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Yes, ma'am? Oh.
Say, don't forget.
Say, bless.
She has corrections to the minutes. She only did bills.
Ms. Lopez, did you have corrections to the minutes as well? Yes, ma'am. If no one from the dais has any corrections to the minutes? Yes, ma'am.
I guess I should say my name, Roberto Lopez, so everybody will know.
Thank you.
In case you don't. Corrections to the minutes. Last month, the veterans, I brought in some information about the veterans memorial being and really needing really a lot of repair. At the October 13th meeting, this project created much discussion. A plan was presented and jam contractors who worked on different projects for the city of Archer for more than 17 years sent in a proposal. It was approved two to one with Mayor Hope dissenting. The city should remove the statement in the minutes that, and I quote, "I will start fundraising immediately." Commissioner Green amended the motion to move forward with the proposal subject to conditions that the structural and safety measures be addressed. And it was seconded by Commissioner Penny. I placed the call after I left here to jam, but for some reason out of the blue, he did never, he never did return my call and I never did receive any calls from City Hall either. That's, that really, that should have been on the old business, new business, no, old business tonight. And it's not on the agenda. That's another thing I wanted to point out. During the discussion, Wild Spaces Public Places funds came up. It is my understanding that these funds could be used to repair the memorial. I am recommending to this commission to use funds to repair the veterans memorial at the Archer Community Center. And I want to make it clear to all of you, I will not raise a dime to do this. I came here in good faith. I wanted to raise that money and you know I can. And it was too much going on, so I'm done with that. But I'm encouraging you to please, please fix the memorial. We're not having an event this coming memorial. And you know what the problem is down there, so I'm asking you to use the funds from the Wild Spaces Public Places and fix it.
Correct, Mr. Attorney? Okay, because I don't know if we can, I would, personally, I don't think we should take that down, but that's my opinion.
To what now?
The Wild Spaces, if the Wild Spaces doesn't pay for that, because we're trying to use Wild Spaces for quite a bit. So, because I know Commissioner Fiori has that on as a recommendation. I think it's a good idea when we get to hers because there's just so many things we want to spend it on and I think we really need to kind of figure out what, because there's a little under $200,000 in there. And half is Wild Spaces, half is infrastructure.
I think the emphasis that Ms. Lopez, if I read you correctly and understand you correctly, she does not want to do anything with the fundraising at this point, so if the minutes could reflect that and correcting that.
And you did discuss that in the meeting. You said something about maybe we could use, you were talking to your colleagues and you said, well, maybe we could use some...
We would look into that as a possibility, yes, ma'am.
I want to, I want to finish because I swear you get me off track, Mayor. I'm getting old. So, so what I'm trying to say is that you can, you can look at this if you want, but I know you have money there. And how can you even, how can you even determine what you have when we have not even had a plan, a financial workshop to determine how are you going to spend every dollar?
Ms. Lopez, what does that have to do with correcting the minutes that you requested?
Just what I read. And, and, and I brought it up because that was part of the, that was part of the minutes, the Wild Spaces Public Places. Don't get me wrong, it was in there. You mentioned it.
Yes, ma'am, duly noted, thank you. Any other corrections to minutes?
Well, when I'm up here talking, there's one thing I want to tell you, Mayor. Let me finish what I'm talking about and maybe you'll understand what's going on.
Yes, ma'am.
Apparently, you know, you're interrupting me the whole time I'm talking and, and I'm sick and tired of it because it's not right. I'm just trying, you, you're telling me something now when it was showing up in the minutes. You said it. So why don't you just take that and let it go? And let's have a workshop as soon as possible.
May I ask the city attorney a question? I don't think I should change the minutes because this is exactly how it occurred.
And she's updating her status of saying she doesn't want to...
That would be the next meeting or this meeting, I would put that she does, is not going to do the fundraising, the city...
And the only thing she's asked to add is that we would look at utilizing Wild Spaces Public Places.
The issue you have at this point, I would appear to me on the minutes is whether that happened then or not. If it happened, then it happened and you approved the minutes. If it didn't happen, you take it out. Then you can put in next month's meeting exactly what Ms. Lopez had to say.
Yeah, you can't avoid what I had to say.
Duly noted, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Anyone else? Regarding...
Lori Costello, citizen. Mayor Hope, I heard you say something about insurance. The price of insurance changed because the staff changed.
Ma'am, I think you have the minutes on the floor now and I don't know whether it's a germane to the minutes or not.
That was, Ms. Lopez had both minutes and bills.
Okay. Okay.
And this citizen wants to know about bill payments.
Right, right. So, I, um, the twelve-hundred dollars that we're paying for the account specialist, are we paying for insurance for that person also?
Respondent, she goes, no, we are not. She gets paid, and that's all.
Then how did the insurance go up in, in one month?
Which insurance?
The Blue Cross Blue Shield.
There's no way it could've went up, it would've went down.
It went, well, up, down, change.
First of the month, it was higher than the end of the month, because of an employee leaving.
Okay. The credit card receipts, not all the credit cards receipts are there. So, the polo shirts, I, I'm pretty sure the one-seventy-something is for the skull, but I don't know what the thirty dollars is for, could I find out what that's for?
They both say Archer Junior Commission Polos.
They do?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
So all the receipts are here. I made sure.
From?
For the visa, you just said all the receipts weren't there, yeah, they are.
Okay, 'cause I just looked on mine twice.
But what's missing is what I'm asking you, what they're here.
Okay. Well, I just got mine off the internet. So, um, okay, so I'm also asking that you not to approve the bills, because I noticed, looking at the bank statements, I'm like, well, how do we know what this is, and this is, and this is, and this is, and I'm like, not even half the bills are on here, and you guys are approving that bill sheet, and it's like, you can't do that. You can't just, you know, so I'm also requesting that, that you, you don't approve, approve something like that until it's done a complete, completely. What is COA premium? I'm sure that means City of Archer, but what is that?
Where are you at?
Well, I don't have this stuff with me. Um, it was on the bank statements.
Oh, you have to tell me which one?
Well, it was several, several things, COA premium. Well, this is another reason why you need the bill payment statement to tell us what it's for, because everybody in this room is really worried about the finances. And we, we should know exactly what's happening with the bills, and, and how much is being spent, and where it's going. So, also, back to the bills, I've been asking for payroll summary, I had been given a payroll summary, and it was all wrong, and wasn't told at the time I was given it, and I'd been asking for that payroll summary, and I still want the payroll summary, okay? Thank you.
For what period, Ms. Lopez, have you stated that in your public records?
I'm Miss Costello.
Have you requested the period that you want in a public records request?
All of last year. It was, it's supposed to be an up-to-date, ongoing summary.
Physical year in twenty-twenty-five.
Yes, yes, it, it, well, I asked for it back last year, back in the summer. Yeah, back this past summer I asked for it, and I've been asking for it.
But now you want the whole fiscal year twenty-five?
Yeah, yeah, but that's a document that you keep.
Duly noted, Ms. Lopez.
Okay, thank you.
Costello, welcome back. Anyone else regarding bill payment or minutes?
Good evening, Bill Ondalski.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, first of all, Commissioner Fiori, thank you very much for that detailed analysis of the, of the bills. So again, I like to bring to your attention that you're, you're again attempting to approve bills, and you really have no idea where you're at in your budget. It's, you keep on telling me that, you know, you guys are behind, and it's too hard to do. It really is not too hard to do. You've had folks offer to help with this. You need to know what percent of your budget you're at when you're approving bills, these bills are already paid. So it's not like it's a big deal to do that calculation. It would be a little bit different if you were approving these things and then paying the bills, but it's done already, so it's already, I'm assuming it's already inputted into some system somewhere. So, I, and I, I'm not even asking for you to say, for example, a particular, buying a widget, what percent, I'm more interested in the major categories, as you should be.
Expenses versus revenue.
Expenses versus revenue, where are we at in the budget on these things before you approve it? If you don't, you're just not doing good governance.
Yes, sir.
So, could you please tell me when you expect to do, I've been asking for this really for over a year?
Do you wanna speak to that?
Didn't we say February?
February, and we authorized overtime, and Dallas Lee has been ill for a week, and he is going to start coordinating with Ms. Ott to look specifically at this issue, so that we can expedite.
So you're not gonna be able to do this until February?
That was what was determined last month. We can expedite if we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. That's your current answer tonight. Welcome, Ms. White.
Commissioners, I, I think this is where it needs to come up. In the bills, you'll notice, we paid our employees on October the twenty-ninth and October the fifteenth. I have brought this to Deanna's attention, I've brought this to Tony's attention, I've brought it to the commission's attention. Those fall on a Wednesday. When this came up before, we were told, I mean, we got wrote up for this with the state. It's been going on for a while, it's not just when there's, somebody's gonna be out. It's been going on for months that I know of. It's against the law. You're paying, you're prepaying employees. It's against the law. So, I'm bringing it to your attention one more time. If the state writes you up again, it's on you.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a follow-up question with that.
Yes ma'am.
So when is pay period? Every second Thursday?
Yes, so Wednesday ends our pay period, so Thursday would be the start of a new pay period.
Alright, so to make this clear, so you're sending electronically the payment to the bank to fund the paychecks that will be hitting on the Thursday?
Correct. I send the file Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, so are the employees, do they have access to those funds on Wednesday?
Probably after five, yes, or Thursday morning, depends on what bank they have.
And we don't, you, you're paying employees based on previous two weeks, you're not paying them up to that Wednesday?
Oh, no, we're up to, yeah, it's, we're literally up to, that's how our pay periods work. You finish Wednesday, and then you get paid, that's how it's been, that's how it's had. So, so you submit the file Wednesday afternoon, you know, you know everyone's still here, or if they're not here, then you have time to fix it, and, you know, in QuickBooks before you put it into the bank.
Yeah, so, you know, I've done a lot of payroll, first of all, I've never seen you get paid all the way up to that, that moment, usually you're paid two weeks, you know, out, but, um-
They don't always go in in the afternoon. Sometimes payroll goes in in the morning. Scott has received his payroll at noon.
On the Wednesday?
One, on noon, one o'clock. Now, that's been two months, but that's the truth.
Well, I do know that, you know, banks do require by a certain hour to have the deposits to the bank. I think that's a conversation to have with our bank, and say, what is the last possible hour that they can get that deposit, that automatic deposit made, to prevent that large lag, you know, we don't want employees getting paid at ten AM, obviously, and they're still supposed to be there until five. But I think that's a conversation you have to have with the bank on when's the last possible minute. And I will say that when you are small staff like that, it's, you know, if, I don't know who's doing it on this staff.
I am right now.
Okay, so you have to pick the pockets. I would be concerned if we were hearing that they were being paid, you know, days ahead of time, but I do know that, and I don't have the history there, but I, I don't think it's very uncommon for a couple hours like that. But I'd be happy to help with the, talk to the bank through it if staff wanted me to talk with anyone.
Use the mayor's bank?
Yeah.
Okay. They should be able to give you the time certain Wednesday.
So let me understand, I took, because I know when I first came on board, so, so they're being paid, for instance, if their pay period in this Wednesday. Okay, then they get paid that Thursday for that pay period that went in that day before?
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, I thought that's what I understood when I first came on board. Yeah, most of the time, most jobs, you, you know, you have like, you know, maybe your pay period will go in maybe like this Wednesday, and you're getting paid for that, you know, next Thursday. So, uh, yeah, I, I don't know if that's something we need to try to correct, but if so, it mean that people would have to miss a pay. You know, miss a week of pay, so I don't know if we can even touch that to change it, is what I'm saying. Yeah, a week or two, like, you know, that was already in place. Might have a little fight with that one.
Anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Arnold.
Hello, Jean Arnold. I, I'm not sure how you all got in that predicament, where you don't have some type of holdback, whether, maybe it's a government thing? I don't know, I don't know how the city of Newberry runs their business, or the city of Gainesville, or Latchwa County, but if an employee doesn't come in on that Wednesday, or works till noon, or whatever it is, and you have to pay them, and you have to make the decision to pay them through five o'clock that day, so that, and, and then put it in ahead of time, whether they work those however many hours, that's, again, that's just crazy to me. These are crazy protocols that could easily be cleaned up, and when you hire someone, I mean, most every business, and it doesn't have to be two weeks, but if you work through, your cutoff is, let's say, Friday, Saturday, whatever it is, and then on the following Wednesday, payroll's done, and then people get paid either Wednesday night or Thursday, but you have a little bit of a buffer in there for-
Correction.
Whether it's a week, two weeks, you know, and not, not to rub salt in the wound, but sometimes that's a deterrent for if there's a theft, or something, that you have a couple days, or a week's worth of payroll, or something, you have some, just my two cents, thank you.
Wow, Commissioner Y, this, well, it used to be Commissioner Y. You blame it on the wrong dice, so whoever was here long before us, I think that was in place, so.
Your policy has it covered. Your policy has it covered. Time ends on Wednesday afternoon, payroll is done on Thursday. It's now being done on Wednesday, why can't it be, be done on Thursday like policy states?
Minimum.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
Then you fall into the state guidelines that were supposed to, and ours.
Thank you. Could you look at our policy and bring it back to us with recommendations? For your sake, and just processing, and anybody else that does payroll. Anyone else?
Just might just have to change the payday or something.
Should bring the policy back to us with a recommendation. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda with the comments, say aye.
We didn't know, we were doing the vote, we're doing the vote. So restate, because, yeah, we were caught off guard, we thought we were still doing comments.
I don't think there were any other comments from anyone?
No, we didn't know you were gonna-
Okay, so let's go to vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Oh, wait, are we gonna do the minutes? Can we, yeah, let's separate it out, I'm sorry.
All those in favor of Agenda Item One, under Consent Agenda, approving the minutes from October thirteenth, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well?
Nay.
Motion carries four, one. Commissioner Fiori in dissent. Agenda Item Number Two, approve the bill payments as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Nays like sign?
Nay.
Nay as well, with corrections to be submitted in our next meeting. Next is public announcements. Anyone have anything for the good of the country? Or the community?
I was gonna say, or the city.
Or both.
Then, Green, the announcement I wanna make is our farmers' market is every Tuesday, at the hours now from two to six. We have new people every week coming through the museum, and we have some new displays, and I would like for you all to come sometime, and the other thing I would like to say tonight is welcome aboard, Commissioner Fiori. Commissioners, I hope you will take what she has said tonight as constructive criticism, because it's long overdue, and you know that she has the background to, to, you know, to carry through on these things, and you're gonna learn a lot from it, thank you. Ms., Ms., Ms. Green, tomorrow, are you guys gonna do the farmers' market even though? Okay. Yeah, and the flags will be flying. Thank you. Announcement.
Yes, sir, Ms. Ondalski.
Yeah, so I just wanted to publicly thank the community for their support for Bikers on Parade. We had over a hundred motorcycles leaving from, from Bronson, from the, from Amfest Post eighty-eight. Commissioner Penny was at, was on site for that, posted lots of videos, thank you very much. I was up in Tallahassee riding with that group. Also, I'd like to say that Archer Automotive was one of our sponsors, the local sponsors. Joni White and Tanya Dean provided items for our, for our silent auction. So we had, we had a really successful ride, and we'll be able to help, help lots of veterans in need in our central Florida, based on that, thank you.
Thank you for your contributions. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Reverend Pisco, First Archer United Methodist Church, I've been very clearly instructed by my sister to say, happy birthday, Marine Corps, hurrah. Okay, you know, we at Archer First United Methodist are very committed to feeding the hungry. We feel that that is something that has been made very clear in the Holy Scripture. And so, we are excited to have our next community dinner on November twenty-first, that is a free community dinner, it's a spaghetti dinner this go-around, and so we love to see all of you there to connect with our neighbors, and we've got some fun karaoke planned for that afterwards, so the dinner starts at five-thirty, I believe that's like, like, five-thirty, and it goes to seven o'clock, and then karaoke is at seven. I also just wanna remind people that outside of the church, we have a, a community food box. And it's been really amazing to watch people bring food and receive food, with no questions asked, it's, it's almost impossible for us to keep it full. And so I just wanna invite neighbors who might feel, particularly at this point in time, a pull on their heart to help feed our neighbors, to feel free to drop food off at any time, we do ask that you not put perishable items in there, however, because it just doesn't go very well. And then finally, on November twenty-fifth, we're super excited to host an ecumenical Thanksgiving worship service, and so I hope that you also will be able to join us for that time of giving thanks, because there is much for us to be thankful for, thank you.
That time will be what time for the service, five-thirty?
Yeah, I think it's, the, the worship service?
Yes, ma'am.
Is six-thirty, I believe, yes, six-thirty. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the twenty-fifth?
Yes, ma'am, mhm, yes.
Anyone else? Okay. Next is our public comment period number one. Anyone?
Lori Costello, citizen.
Yes, ma'am.
While I was gone, I did listen to the meetings, and I was questioning why the trucks are unsafe. We spent two-thousand dollars on one of the trucks, and months later, they were deemed unsafe. I know when Deanna said that to y'all, nobody asked any questions, so I'm asking it. Also, when are we getting that automatic lock for the bathrooms? You know, we're spending like thirteen-thousand dollars to pay call-out time, to unlock and lock the bathrooms, and that is a lot of money. Also, I'd like to know the cost of the new privacy, I don't know what you would call it, around public works, they just put it up. And it was, it's amazing what's behind there. The weeds are three foot high, I mean, it is a mess, you will never go to a- You will never go to another city and see their public works area look like ours. Or they would be fired on the spot. I have pictures if anybody would like to see them. Okay.
Could you sit, would you be able to send those to Deanna just for her review, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, they had the time to put that up to hide all the junk where the public works are. But right across the field, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen. All the stuff is, is ripped up, people are gonna trip, I mean, it's everywhere, it's the whole area.
The weed cloth that?
The weed cloth, it is terrible.
Okay.
Um.
And that's at Maddox Park or both parks?
Yes, yes. Uh, I, I mean, um, the, things just are not getting done, and we, three guys is plenty, plenty to do the work here. I've emailed every single person here, including Deanna, twice. Uh, when I was a commissioner, what public works used to do, and they did five times the amount of work with the same amount of people. So three guys are plenty, they should be getting everything done. We're letting our retention ponds go, we're letting carpentry work done, all of the pavilions need, it needs work. I mean, the list goes on. Um, the roads, my road, I did a work order. I did a work order fo, back in April for the potholes on my road. Nothing's ever been done. Our, uh, our water, our pump house
Oh, sure.
is rotting. You know, I remember when y'all talked about it, and somehow somebody got in their head that all that siding needs to be taken off. That is not what needs to be happening at all. A one-by-six needs to go on there, it needs to be caulked and painted.
Anything else, time's up, Ms. Lu.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Arnold.
Okay, hello again, um, first thing, I don't know if I've ever seen, I, I've been coming for a couple years now, all y'all not approve a consent agenda, so kudos. I think it, Robert, Robert, or no, John Kennedy said, "One person can make a difference if you try," something along those lines, so all well done. All right, um, does this mean now that Commissioner Fiori will have access to the bookkeepers and things, and kinda, I know she had a bunch of good questions, but kinda working together, coming together, if she's got time, it just seems like we're gonna get the ship going in the right direction, hope?
Any and all of us have that opportunity to schedule that with any staff through Deanna, yes, sir.
Wonderful. But Dallas Lee is still involved, correct, in some capacity?
Correct, as a consultant contractor, yes, sir.
Okay, and the bookkeeper, if I'm understanding, I didn't know this, I thought that she was an employee of the city of Archer, but it sounds like she is part of a temporary staffing agency? Is there a, a pro, I mean, it sounds like she's doing a good job, is she, is there a process to where if she works for Archer for six months, then we're allowed to then extend employment or something?
We can offer her employment, yes, or extend the contract, but I would definitely go for offer employment, and it's a thousand dollar buyout. Right now, it's like a eight thousand dollar buyout to buy out her contract.
Okay, so over time, it, it drops down, okay, good to know. Um, one thing to note, in the last four months or so, we've had five different attorneys, uh, including with this gentleman here. I don't know if we can get a sense of continuity, or if Mr. Walker's coming back, or what's going on, but we got a lot of problems, a lot of issues, and continuity is a good thing. Um, are we still working four days a week, or is there any more talk of ever going to five days?
We're still working four days a week, yes.
Okay, and still doing the call-out of, of all that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I, I know that Commissioner Fiori talked about bank reconciliations, but certainly we have an audit probably coming up, or in that process, that's gonna take time. Did, I hear where employees get a hundred and twenty hours for sick time each year, is that each year?
That's correct, yes.
And is that in addition to, how much vacation time do they get?
It depends on how long you've been here, it's in five-year increments, I think it caps out at twenty-plus years.
Accrued by pay period, so many hours.
Okay, that's.
You don't get it at the beginning of the year, yes, accrues four-point-six-two, I believe, per pay period, or three-point-six-nine, one of those figures.
Okay, so along with holidays, and then not working on Fridays and sick days?
What was?
Okay, just trying to understand the situation. And then one thing, the, the IT support, I say it every time, I still don't know why we're paying twenty-two hundred dollars for IT support. That just seems outrageous to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bill Unduski, Citizen, so, um, I'm bringing up something that I've been brought, I've been bringing up last couple of meetings. Um, on September fifteenth, I sent a letter to you Commissioners and to, uh, Deanna in regards to the, uh, my concerns of the approval of the site plan for the, uh, concrete batch plant. My issue, uh, just to remind you, is that a letter had been, uh, I guess, again, this is based on the packet, the publicly available packet that was available online. So based on that packet, uh, there was a letter that was sent from, um, Deanna dated May twenty, May fifth, twenty-twenty-five, in which she stated that the North Florida Regional Planning Council had completed its second review of the site and development plan for the proposed Arnold-Reddy mixed plant. So the problem is, is that there was an April, a letter dated April twenty-fifth from the North Florida Central Regional Planning Commission that said, quote, "Once the city engineer and the fire chief had determined that the plan meets requirements of land use code, the application can be scheduled for review." So the problem is, is that you have a letter from North Florida Central, uh, saying that you need to have this, check these, check these blocks off, we'll do a second review. That was back in April. In May, we have a letter going out saying, hey, they've done the review, but there's no documentation that shows that, so that was my question. Now, I've raised this several times, Mr. Walker sat there and said, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna review this, and we can see what happens." And then last meeting, uh, another lady from the attorney's office said, "Well, we were talking about it." So it's not that I have an issue with the concrete batch plant in this regard, it's a by rights development, I have an issue with process. So it's not just this particular copy, concrete batch plant and this particular site plan review, but these things are important, and they need to be done correctly. And by the way, we're paying seven thousand dollars to these guys, right, a year, if I'm not mistaken?
North Central Florida.
North Central Florida, right, to do this review work for us. So are we gonna do this right by time this becomes an archaeological site? I mean, how long do I have to wait before I get an answer back from the city attorney? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I talked to Mr. Walker about that, and he said that he has, that his opinion that has been drafted, and that he's waiting to review that, so I would suspect that it will be at your next meeting.
Could we, and to assure that you can take that off your plate, that it will be on the agenda, would you put that as ongoing old business for our review and update as our reminder for next meeting?
Okay, thank you.
December eighth.
Okay.
Doesn't answer it tonight for you, but it's now on record.
Okay, thanks.
There needs to be the update, thank you.
Mayor, on that note, if the opinion has been drafted and he's just waiting to review it, what is stopping us from posting that opinion on our website to allow the citizens to see what that is instead of waiting another month?
Well, he doesn't want to put the opinion out until he's reviewed it.
Yeah, I'm saying when he's, after he reviewed it, you're, it's gonna be another thirty days just to review it?
I don't know, I don't have control over there.
I don't know if that's really acceptable, I mean, this has been something three months.
I would rather to have the attorney present for any discussion from that opinion, is my opinion. Commissioner Fiori. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lopez.
Roberto Lopez. I want to talk a little bit about the Archer Community Center. And this is, I consider it my baby. Because we made it what it is today. The Archer Community Center holds immense personal significance to me, not just because it, it is an essential hub for our community, but also due to its rich, rich history, built in nineteen thirty-six as part of the Franklin D. Roosevelt Work Progress Administration, WPA. The center stands as a testament to our shared past and community spirit. This facility is truly the heart of Archer, Florida, a small town with a population of just one thousand one hundred twenty-five people. It's the only place where our residents can come together, celebrate our tradition, and build a stronger community. In August twenty-eleventh, our community triumphally, or amply, reopened the old gym, making it the Archer Community Center after raising one million to restore it for the purpose, for, for a multi-purpose center. Since then, it has become a vital space for Veteran Day events, health fairs, weddings, art, art shows, workshops, Easter parades, youth, uh, events, Christmas events, and thousands of people from around the area and beyond come together to participate, learn, and celebrate in this cherished venue. The recent proposal to repurpose this historic site into a new city hall may stem from the current hall's non-compliance with ADA standards. Nevertheless, taking away our most valuable facility is not a justifiable solution undermining the very essence of our community unity. We acknowledge the importance of ADA compliance, however, there are alternatives, solutions that should be considered. Perhaps the renovation of the existing city hall is possible, or a construction of a new building after we get the sewer and the people start coming in. And it would be designed specifically for the needs of this community. I'm saying all of this to say, I sat here and I watched you guys say that you wanna move into it, the, the Archer Community Center, sell this place, sell Ms. Alamee's place. Where are your citizens gonna go? What are you gonna do when we get the sewer and all these people move into town and they have no place to go? The building, first of all, is too large for you.
Your time is up, Ms. Lopez.
There's three people in here, and, and, and you don't need a building that size. I am proposing, Mayor, that you drop that idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on, planning calendar?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. So on, city hall's closed tomorrow, Tuesday, November eleventh, for Veterans Day. The city hall will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-seventh, in observance of Thanksgiving. And the JCC meeting will be at six PM, the city commission being at six-thirty on Monday, December eighth, here at city hall.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business, Agenda One, Royal Hill Cemetery Maintenance Agreement with West Farms. Do you wanna speak to that first, regarding staff review?
Okay, so back in two thousand seventeen, I believe, we did an RFP. And if I remember correctly, the bids came in like really high, I'm trying to remember who was on the commission then, I know you were mayor. Um, but I remember then, we looked at how much an employee would cost, you know, with all their benefits, and it was thirties, around twenty-nine, thirty thousand. So I remember, um, West Farms, since they have family members there, you know, and the investment in the cemetery and in the community, had decided to do it, I think it was four-eighty-two, and that's where this contract, why I have this contract in here. And now it's five-eighty-two, so in, what, seven, ten, eight years?
It's going up ninety-eight dollars a month.
Right. So I know we had talked about taking it out of the budget.
Thank you all.
And, you know, having a public works person
Yes, ma'am.
do the work, I just, I think under seven thousand dollars, we should keep West Farms, is my opinion, I think they do a great job. We have a few complaints here and there hitting the stones, but they always fix them, I mean, that's gonna happen, I think, no matter where you're at. Especially that fart, front spot, excuse me, is so tight, you know, you have to like weed eat and all that, but I just think it's gonna take, it would take a person almost non-stop during the summer months to just finish and start over. And it's just, seems like a lot of liability to put on the city. That's input from staff. We're definitely for keeping West Farms.
So staff recommendation is to continue with West Farms?
Yes, sir.
Do they have a current contract, or we'll do an RFP again, or what is your recommendation?
I would.
Sole source West Farms for that price?
I mean, the contract keeps, I mean, as far as I know, it just auto-renews, but if you want me to reach out, we can get a new contract, I'm sure.
I don't know what.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I was told that that needs to go out for bidding.
Bid, that's, that's why I asked that, that.
E, e, even if we're not gonna, we haven't canceled it, though, why would we put it up for bid? That would be a new service.
All I can tell you is what, uh, what I was hoping.
Okay.
So you may wanna check with Scott.
Okay.
And that would be the appropriate process, and then that gives West Farms the opportunity, if they need to make an adjustment, we're looking at apples to apples, is.
But I still don't understand why we have to bid it, I'm not trying to be, I just don't understand. We usually bid or RFQ for, you know, qualifications or for a, a proposal, we usually don't bid when we're, unless we're unhappy with service and wanna, unless we're unhappy with West Farms, we want to rebid, then I understand, I'll do whatever, it just, I don't understand.
Scott probably thought that it, the contract was up, is what I'm thinking, because of, now, I wasn't here last month, but the month before last, when he was here, and the conversation, maybe he thought that the contract was already null and void.
And it wasn't automatically renewed every year, as it's been, because we have not had an RFP comparison in the seven, eight years that they've been doing it, since twenty-seventeen, which is the automatic renewal that you're speaking about.
Yes, sir.
But based on the lapse of paying them in October, because we owe them for October service, correct, even though they were out of contract?
I believe we owe them.
I mean, we paid them for October service.
We should owe for October, well, we should owe for November, we pay in advance, I believe, I'll have to look to make sure I'm correct.
There's two payments sitting there for your month of October, and you're up to date, I believe, from my records for the whole year twenty-twenty-five.
We paid them for the first month of this budget year in October, out of contract.
Well, why are we saying out of contract, we're not out of contract, we're in contract. Yeah, so, right now, it's just proceed as usual, it sounds like to me.
Isn't October the first month of the budget year, and we said that the city staff would do it, starting in October first, and they didn't. We contracted again for thirty days.
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but, um, just because your budget stated that you weren't gonna stay with them, doesn't mean that your contract is null. And they continue the services.
And they provided the services, so they are owed the payment, that's.
And they were paid.
But at this point, in November tenth, have they done any services there? We don't know.
I know they did it in October, but I don't know about November, I can't answer that without going.
In fairness to that contractor that's now out of contract and continuing, we need to put it.
No one's not out of contract.
Well, it will be when we put an RFP out.
Only if we have to put an RFP out.
That, that's the message I'm getting strictly from legal, that we need to do the RFP for the services.
She's gonna call them and ask them about it. Yeah, she's gonna, um, ask, yeah, ask her why we need to do a RFP.
So do we entertain a motion to continue this contingent on the feedback, or do we wanna table this till next month?
Uh, 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 Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I think at this rate, we best leave this alone, if it's automatic renewal, because if we RFP this and when other folks put their real high bid out there, they might wanna go up on there, some things just need to be left alone, I think.
I fully, I fully appreciate that.
So I think, I think that if Deanna has said she will reach out to Scott to find out why, that we go that route and find out. If it's not out of contract and we don't have to do it, then we don't, and we move from there. So with that being said, I think we should table it until we find out why.
To determine whether they're gonna continue with West Farms.
Correct.
Correct.
Table this till next month, December eighth.
Yes.
Based on the information you bring back to us on December eighth. All right, is that a motion?
It can be a motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Vice Mayor to table this until December eighth?
I just want to say one other thing. Now, when we're talking about tabling it, and if it's just the automatic renewal, well, I guess we will have to table it. I think, I'm thinking ahead of myself, but, you know, in my opinion, I just don't want to bother it. I don't want to shake up anything, you know, because this is a really, really good, good price that they are charging us, you know, to do this, but...
I have an issue tabling it for another month. So, Deanna has to make a decision, do we allow them to come in and do a mowing when it's needed, based on the current contract that is a valid contract? So, I think you need to give Deanna the approval that before next month, if they show up to do this contract work, that she has the ability to say yes, continue.
Yes, but that's what the contract says.
Certainly within your purview of your expense allotment to be able to do that. And then return with the information from us.
No, we need, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We correct the information that we gave for budget year, that we would have our own staff do it, because we still have to...
We did say that.
That's why I'm saying, give Deanna the permission to continue as normal.
But come back with us, with whether we RFP it or not.
Right, right. Because I think that is the question, to find out why we needed the RFP.
And bring that up.
But if we don't need it, because I'm thinking that maybe Scott, because of our conversation, he was thinking something different.
An emotion from a budget standpoint.
Right, right.
Okay, do I have a motion or have a second? Have a second from Commissioner?
Do we have a motion?
The motion was to table this until December eighth, but give the administrator the opportunity to find out why she has to RFP it, and it be within her realm of expenses to continue that service there.
Correct.
For her community, for an asset, to maintain it.
Correct.
Is that pretty clear?
Yep.
It gives you autonomy to speak and then report. Thank you. I had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Is that clear? You okay?
Clear as mud.
Always, everything we do is. Okay. Any comments from the constituents in the audience? Yes, or Mr. Lewandowski?
Yeah, I'm not an attorney, so, but reading the plain English of the contract, the commencement terms, subparagraph two, "Work performed by the contractor will commence on May eighth, two thousand seventeen, and shall continue for a one-year term following the date of commencement, unless extended by mutual agreement of the parties or terminated as provided herein." So, that means that if we assume that you continue to contract, the term runs from May to May.
May to May.
So, right now, the question is really moot. I mean, you're under contract still. So, the attorneys need to, you know, buy off on that. But my reading of the plain English is, is that you're under contract still, unless they say, well, you didn't pay us, and they cancel it. But if you didn't get a notice in writing...
As far as a thirty-day notice, doesn't it, from either party?
Thirty, correct, thirty-day notice, so you're under contract, so that's a discussion to have next May.
Anyone else?
So, question, question, if we're still on the contract, and we've already agreed that this is something our guys can't do, do we actually need to do anything with this?
I feel legally, we need to find out why there was a need for the RFP, if we're contract hot.
Well, I think because we had that discussion. It wasn't because we had that discussion about letting out, you know, as far as, you know, that's what I'm saying, with the budget, when we were discussing our budget, and it came up that our guys could do it in that, that's how we got here in the first place?
And now we see that it's thirty thousand for our guys to do it.
Right.
Seven thousand plus, whatever.
So, that's what I'm saying, if we're still on the contract...
Okay, I always go on the vice of legal, and that's why we contract with legal attorneys. So, if there's something there, I would like to know that next month, that's all I'm...
Okay, so, Deanna, when you talk with them, can you ask them, do we necessarily have to do anything with this? I know we're gonna table it, but do we necessarily have to do anything with this? Again, I don't want to, in other words, if it's not broken, don't try to fix it. So, that's the best way I can explain what I'm trying to say.
That's the point of her, reaching out to Scott, so we can find out if we have to do anything.
Right, to see if we even need to do anything with this.
Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, let's go to the vote. All those in favor of tabling us until we get the legal information provided from our attorneys, and the advice from our administrator on how to proceed at December eighth meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, nay is like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Five, zero. I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Fiori, did you say yay?
Yeah, I did.
I'm sorry, I didn't. I usually can hear, I just missed your voice, I'm sorry.
I won't say yea on everything, I promise.
It's a new yea, that's all, from my voice. Okay. New business item one, resolution number two thousand twenty-five, amending the prior established water rates to increase the rates. Mr. Attorney, you want to read the resolution for us? Thank you, sir.
May I read the resolution by title only?
Yes, sir.
The resolution of the City of Archer, water permitting and water services within the City of Archer, amending the prior established rates to increase the rates, providing for conflicts and separability, repealing all resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion would be to pass the resolution as read by table and title.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Motion from Commissioner, Vice Mayor Bailey, a second from Commissioner Marilyn Green, need discussion from the dais regarding this decision to increase?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, these rates, if adopted tonight, go into effect for November's? So, if any November bills have been generated, will they be edited? Would they be adjusted, I mean?
There won't be any that, yes, to answer your question, but the majority will come out with the new rates, because they're gonna remeter it next week, so the bills will be out, you know, by the twenty-fifth, around that date, so they will have the increases on, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so if there was already a November bill out there that didn't have the new rate, so there hasn't been?
No, ma'am, not till a few weeks from now, then it'll have all the rates on if they're approved tonight.
So, we bill all at the same time for all of our customers?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
Okay. GRU, we do every single day, so I was like, oh, goodness.
Anyone else from the dais, questions? Hearing none, the constituents, yes, ma'am, Ms. Costello? Yes, ma'am.
Lori Costello, citizen, I just want to say, I do not agree with raising the water rates, especially when our employees dictate whether they'll do flexible scheduling, because we could save that money if they would do flexible scheduling. And it is not fair to the citizens. We already pay for their pants, their shirts, their caps, their hats, their water boots, their steel-toed boots, their regular boots. I mean, three weeks paid vacation, twelve days holidays, and, I mean, no, three weeks sick time. I mean, there's, to a certain point, you got to say no. And this would have been it, you know? Flexible scheduling, if the commission would have demanded it, we would have never had to raise the water rates on the citizens. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lori.
I just have two seconds.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we had noticed the citizens before we applied that increase. So, the increase will not be on the November bill?
The letter was sent to everybody, so I guess...
Well, I didn't get one.
And it was put on, it should have been posted.
It wasn't on my water bill. I looked again, and I didn't get a notice. I received no notice of an increase. And I have talked to a couple of others, and they haven't seen it either, but they may have misplaced it. So, anyway, you need to make sure that everybody got it. Also, I'm a little bit like Lori. The five-dollar increase, after taking our taxes to the max, and then a two-dollar increase on our garbage, is a little much on the citizens. When our employees are gonna get a Christmas bonus, and anything, I mean, they deserve what they get, as far as their pay. They deserve it. But they have good benefits. And we're, you're taking it up on our citizens to the max on everything, almost, and I think we've paid enough, too. Just my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Come on. You're up.
Annabelle Stoudemire.
Hey, Ms. Stoudemire.
Well, y'all know what I'm finna say, I don't think they need to raise it either, because a lot of people are already going through a lot. And a lot of people, people was telling me that they fighting with their water bill and stuff, and my water bill went up, I didn't like it, but you have to pay it, because if you don't pay it, they'll cut you off. And then you got to start all back over, pay all this fee and stuff. And I'm thinking about the senior citizens, I'm not, you know, trying to be funny, but some people might not can afford it, you know? I'm just, I'm just being honest, I don't know how they do down in the senior citizen area, and how they pay their bills and all that stuff, I don't understand it. But anyway, I do know that, like, I'm gonna say this, and if I'm wrong, y'all correct me, when the water, when somebody come out there to do something with the water, they don't, nobody don't notify us that they cutting the water off. But then, maybe two or three-day later, they just about, boil your water, what in the heck? We ain't even know the thing was gonna be off. We trying to take a bath, or cook, and bim. One time, they was at my yard, and I was trying to cook or do something, and they done cut my water off, and I went out there, I said, excuse me? I said, y'all couldn't knock on my door and tell me y'all cut the water off? And they just looking at me, ain't nobody saying anything, I said, okay. And then, one time, they was out there, and the water just running all over, running all over. Everybody out there have to pay that, because my water bill went up during that time. So, I'm not trying to be funny, we already struggling about when the water in our neighborhood, I don't know about nobody else's neighborhood, and that water run, 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 when they trying to fix that thing, all our water bill goes up. So, I don't know what to say, how to fix this, but I do know that, I do know that some people more, pay more for their water bill than I do, and my, mine's kinda like, you know? It went up last month, this month it came down, I'm going like, mm. But anyway, that's all I had to say, but I know people struggling, I'm just saying.
Mr. Mayor, ask Deanna a question, in reference to what Ms. White said. When did the letters go out, when did the notice, because I get mine online, and I was just looking back a couple of months at my bill online, but when did those go out, as far as letting the residents know about the increase?
They were sent with the September bills.
Okay, so they're not, are they necessarily on the bill? Because I get mine, so for instance, I get mine online, and I looked all the way back to August, I don't see it, I just wonder, is it on those as well?
I don't believe so, because usually we have to put the full page in there.
Okay.
For the notices.
So, the people that get them online wouldn't have gotten notice about the increase?
They probably didn't.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, and I don't know how many...
Did you click on it? Because there is a page, I saw a page when I was looking at my water bill, and it was a list of stuff, and then I realized that those were...
I'm looking at the list, yeah, I'm looking at the list, I see like the Junior City Commission, Commission Trumpet Tree, all that, uh-huh, and I'm all the way back to August now. I was back to August, and I looked on September, I looked, I looked at September and all the way back to August, and I didn't see it on the ones online, but I don't know how many people receive them online, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know, how many residents knew of the increase, even though I agree with the increase, but I don't know.
We have a record of who gets their billing online?
We do, yes.
And could we...
I have to pull a report.
Put that mail out to them, or a complete mail out again?
I just seen something, just a notice.
I think we can email it, right, Mr. Attorney?
Email the notice?
I do not know the answer to that question, I'm sorry.
And I was gonna say, is it on the website? Because we talked about making sure it was everywhere, so that citizens would know, so probably not.
It was posted here in the post office, but I probably didn't, I don't think, I have to look, I have to look under the news and see if it's there.
I don't know how y'all feel, but my feeling is that we need to put out a full notice, make sure that we capture all of the online bill payers and make it effective December billing.
I agree with that.
I mean, then, we're done, and we've done fairness to all, if we approve this or whatever.
A question, Mr. Ireland, is that correct? Okay, do we need to re-mail everybody the notice, it'll be December billing, or just the email people?
I think anybody that you don't believe got it the last time.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. White, do you get a mail, or you get it online? Online, email, so that, that whole capture group probably did not get it.
The only I knew about it was because I knew it was coming.
Yes, ma'am.
And I kept watching.
Okay. Sorry to talk into the audience, yes, ma'am. Reverend Pisco?
Reverend Pisco, I want to thank my neighbor for raising the concern of the hardship that many of our neighbors are experiencing. And I can say that sometimes there's nervous laughter that can come out when hard things are being named, but that's a very real hardship. And in my office, my phone is already seeing an uptick in power being turned off, in food not being available, in evictions happening. And so, I'm wondering, I understand, I understand that there are real financial needs in the city, and I understand that, but I just want to be a voice that calls us to a sense of mercy and justice, that considers what are we going to do to help our citizens for whom this becomes a very serious hardship? Because it doesn't have to be hundreds of dollars to become a hardship for people who are living right on the line. And I can also say, from years of sitting in the desk that I sit in, that once someone crosses that line, once something gets turned off, to get it turned back on begins to increase fees. And so, on the backs of the poor, or those who are food insecure or what have you, we add fines to get things back on. I don't believe it's anyone's intention in this space for that kind of hardship to be on any of our citizens. I just want us to hear the concern that was raised, and to be thinking about what we, as a community, are willing to do to help our citizens who are in major financial hardship, and that's being complicated by other things that are happening beyond our control in our local government. And as a pastor in town, I want you to know, I'm open to having that conversation, it's something we have to do together, though. This congregation I serve is beautiful, and compassionate, and loving, but small and mighty. It will take all of us working together to make sure that our people have clean water to be able to have health. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're beautiful.
Madam Altho, when was the last rate increase we had on our water rates? I'm sorry, not trying to put you on the spot, but it's been multiple years since we increased it, correct?
Twenty-one or twenty-two, I believe.
Was the last rate increase, and it was effective in January. Okay, so, it's been two or three years.
It's been a little minute. It's been, it's been a little minute, and I...
Yeah, I mean, it's not like we just...
I don't think it was twenty-three, I feel like it was closer to twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
Yes, I do, too. Yes, I do too.
But I think.
Thank you, Reverend. I, as soon as Ms. Stoudamire came up and started talking about it, I immediately started thinking about some of the programs that may be available. So you came and confirmed it again. So I think those are some of the programs. I'm gonna see if they are still operational and will benefit people in this community. So hopefully that will be one thing or two.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, you know, to our citizens, we're not insensitive because it affects all of us as well. Sometimes we just have to make hard decisions. But definitely not insensitive, you know, what's being said. Listen, I just paid out for the last couple of months almost a hundred dollars for mine. I don't know, had a leak or my son taking too long showers. I had him become a recheck mine this one. I'm like, what, what is going on? And so I feel, I feel the citizens hit my pocket pretty hard. But sometimes we have to make those hard decisions that we really don't want to make.
Commissioner Green.
Yes, go ahead.
I am not asking you to defend or to be defensive. I'm naming the truth. And I'm not saying that difficult decisions don't have to be made. I'm just saying, let's not make them on the backs of people who are already poor and struggling. Because I believe that there's enough. Because I believe we serve a God of abundance. There's enough. It becomes about priorities and decisions. And somebody has to speak up for our marginalized people. Someone has to do it. So I'm not here, I know your reasons, I understand your reasons, and I understand it impacts all of us. But it's a matter of equity. So a 10% increase impacts someone very differently when their income is a thousand dollars a month versus twenty thousand dollars a month. So 10% across the board is not fair necessarily, even though it may be equal. And I'm asking that we be fair and that we understand that the decisions we're making oftentimes, yeah, we might feel a pinch, but what's a pinch for us is a kick in the gut for somebody else. And so please know, I don't, I understand the numbers. I don't need the defensive answers about it. I'm asking us to be people of justice and equity and compassion when we're making the decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just want to interrate again. You've heard people speak. The whole thing is y'all have the ability to not to raise them is all you have to do is have staff do flexible scheduling. And that's not a whole lot to ask at all. We all need to work together. Our taxes went up. Our trash has gone up, our water's gone up. If you did flexible scheduling, our water and trash would not have to go up, and you would have money left over for the taxes. Not all the taxes, but you wouldn't have to put it up to the max. I'm just asking you enough flexible scheduling that you wouldn't have to raise utilities. And you have the ability to do that. Each and every one of you have the ability to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask a question. So when we say the three fifty with the base rate, how is that calculated?
You know, well, everyone would just, for residential, be eighteen fifty-nine, and then all your water tiers will still come into play. But since we didn't do a percentage this time, you guys decided to do a flat fee. So it'll just be tacked to the base rate instead. So all your water tiers stayed the same? It just went to your base rate?
Per thousand gallons.
That's.
It's just the base rate went up.
Correct, all the.
Twenty-three percent for residential and fifteen percent for business.
Correct, everything else is the same.
So it doesn't pertain to gallons or anything like that? It's just a base?
The base went up.
Just a base three dollar fifty cents. And then your other is calculated like it's always been calculated. So we would be seeing just a three dollar fifty cents. It's not, yeah, and, okay, all right. Just wanted.
Mr. Mayor. I know that y'all don't like people coming up again, but Commissioner Green, I believe I was the one that said it affects us all. And I believe that. But when I calculated numbers, how many meters do we have in the city of Archer? Five hundred and fifty-two?
Somewhere around there.
Somewhere along there. That's twenty-five hundred, a little over twenty-five hundred dollars a month. That's about thirty thousand dollars a year. It doesn't affect me. I'll pay the five dollars, I don't have a problem. It might affect my neighbor. And if it means their medicine or paying that blasted water bill, and I don't know, guess which one they're going after? That's all I'm saying. It's thirty thousand dollars worth putting it to our citizens the way y'all are putting it to them right now. And I was.
Anyone else?
So basically, that equals out to forty-two dollars a year per citizen.
Per account.
The increase, per account.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Just go to a vote?
You can't vote on this, I thought.
I thought that y'all were gonna hold this off until after the notices went out and also it probably the same effect on the next ordinance.
Well, I don't know, the next one is our rates went up for that company.
Like the contract?
For the contract, yeah.
For the commercial.
Already.
Yeah, but I thought you had to notice that as well, and that's noticed on your water bill together. So I would state that you need to hold on both.
I agree with it.
So then we're going to be looking at a rate increase in January as we've always done in the past. If we notice now, but we have to make the decision of whether we're going to do this to provide that notice.
Well, we made that decision, we voted, and we made that decision. So I think we just need to make sure we do the notices. And then, yeah, we can put these off to January if, I mean, we don't have to.
So the notice that went out was probably a proposal?
Uh-uh.
Was it final because we hadn't voted on it?
Yes, we did.
Voted on that, it was final?
Yes.
We voted on it.
So we're just.
This is the resolution that cements the decision to rate the increases.
Okay.
So the problematic solution is to properly notice everyone with the effective date being after the notice goes out, which would be the next billing cycle. If you notice now, again.
Right, so with the November bills, in a few weeks, we're gonna send it, just to clarify, everybody again or just the e-bill people?
Everybody.
I would.
Okay, we have to send out the bills, it'll just be more paper. Yeah, it'll cost more, but we can make it work for.
Just cost.
Just make sure it's on the bill.
Properly be noticing and ensuring that the email receivers get noticed as well. Do a test or whatever. Commissioner Green, if you would be the tester or whatever, just when you get it, make sure, and call in and say, I got it. And you as well, Vice Mayor Bailey, if you would, as a courtesy, just. And then the effective date would be December billing? With the renotice?
Whatever you guys would like.
I would like it, me personally, January to give it, yes, to give it time to go out again.
And people to prepare. And people to prepare.
And prepare. And hopefully some of the things that our country is going through by January, we clear it up. So.
Good luck.
That it'll give people opportunity to save up to budget to fund this increase.
And do not be a creature of old habit, but that's when we've always traditionally done, the review and rate increase was in January. So we'd be back on cycle with that, just a cost to the city, but it just.
Yeah. Like you said, for, you know, for one person, five dollars might not seem a lot, but to another person, you know, that's a Starbucks, but to another person, that five dollars is five dollars, so.
The date of the notice would be January of 2026.
Yeah.
I mean, of the rate change would be January, the month of January 2026.
Can we do it like that? Do we have to re-vote or?
Just amend your motion to that effect?
Okay, I didn't make a mo, oh, okay, I make the motion. I'm sorry. I make a motion that we rescind out the bills, and we can, this can come and affect in January.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
amended second, okay.
And I rescind that first motion that I had.
Okay.
Since, yeah, since it wasn't.
And you rescind your first motion, so, okay.
So we need to, we need to change the date in our resolution.
Yeah, I think all that'll be changed.
I know, that's the adopted, yeah.
Okay.
Ireland, is that possible to amend the resolution and just bring it back for reading next month? Molly, all those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign. Hearing that motion carries five zero.
So you may want to restate what we just did, just in case somebody missed it.
The motion of record?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we combined one and two.
Well, we can go into item two and do the same thing. Because that's what we want to do with both rates. Is it not correct from the dais up here for both resolutions? But you did not read, Mr. Ireland, the second resolution. Correct, so let's approve this, and we did. And now go to item two, resolution number 202534, amending the prior established residential solid waste rates to increase the rates.
Resolution of the City of Archer, pertaining to Solid Waste Services in the City of Archer.
Thank you.
Amending the prior established residential rates to increase the rates provided for conflicts and separability, repealing all resolutions in conflict, providing for an effective date. And I don't believe the proper motion would be a motion to approve, but the motion to re-note and then take it up at the next meeting.
Correct, for January 2026.
That would be the motion that I would accept for consideration.
So.
So move.
And second.
Effective renotice, just as we're doing the water rates, with an effective date in January billing cycle.
Correct.
Of 2026. Do I have a second to that effect?
I did.
I'm sorry.
I said second. From Penny and then me.
Vice Mayor Bailey. Any other discussion from the dais? Any comments from the constituency in the audience? And again, just for record, Ms. Altop, this is the first rate increase of this since 2021 as well?
Yes, sir.
And this one is based on the contractor rate increase going up?
Right.
Yes, sir.
So just to kind of put this in perspective, so the one you just voted on before, now combined with this, this is all in the same water bill. So the reason why you had to raise the water rates is because when Dallas did the analysis, it showed that you needed to raise the rates. Right, that's why, that's why. But that was based upon current conditions and current conduct. And as far as I remember, we haven't had an analysis on exactly what's going on here for several years when we had that agricultural committee. That was a quasi-government organization that comes in and they provided this consultation on water. I can't remember which regional it was now. It was a couple of years ago when they did the analysis and they looked at all the different things that were broken.
Water loss and.
Right, that's right. So I think it's time to, I think you owe it to the citizens to invite that group back to have another look to see what we can do different in order to save money. Because not only did you have to raise rates in the last budget, you had to steal money from that in order to balance your general fund. So you've got some really big problems with this that we have to consider. Now we're gonna have to raise the rates for waste because you have to because it's the contract. So we got these compounding issues. And really, no one's taken a step back to say, what can we do on the water better, if anything? There's been some discussions in terms of water leaks, I get that. But there's other things that perhaps that can be done in terms of the infrastructure because otherwise you get these compounding errors. And that's what really concerns me is we're not really looking at that really hard. Okay, thank you.
And that was a grant funding from U.S. Corps of Engineers that did that, I think.
I think that's correct. And they came in and they, and it was a whole budget. Yeah, as a matter of fact, they actually laid out a budget where you had to agree to put money on aside over, I think, a 10-year period.
So we can reach out to Woodard Gern and ask for that grant sourcing for that again.
Well, correct, yeah. I think it's time for that to happen.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else regarding the motion on the table regarding solid waste?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
As well? Nays like sign. Hearing that motion carries five zero. Mr. Ireland, you bring that back to us, the resolution with the corrected date for next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, not trying to put you on the spot. Sorry, being asked to multitask here.
You don't do that?
No, ma'am. It makes you die early, I should say. Or become laden with other issues. Okay, next on our agenda is item number four, Public Works Assistant and City Manager Job Description and Employment. I think these next, well, this one may be from you, Deanna, or are these the ones from Commissioner Fiore for discussion review?
Yes.
So I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you want to speak to any specificity in these?
Yes, I do, actually.
All right. You're on.
Thank you. So the next five agenda items I placed, I asked Deanna to place on the agenda. I'm gonna respect everyone's time and not go into, try not to go into great detail. The point of me bringing this first item up is that we are under a microscope. We have to, as a commission and staff, proofread everything that leaves this office. Nothing should ever be published, nothing should ever be put on our website that is not proofread by multiple people. Everyone makes mistakes. I made a mistake today, you know, everyone makes mistakes. But you have to rely on your fellow employees, even if it's not in their job title, to be a proofreader. You hand that over and you say, check my work, make sure it's good. The governor, the county, citizens, everyone is looking at us, and we want to make sure we're doing everything possible to put our best foot forward. So the first item is the review of the Public Works Assistant. So last meeting, I saw that there was some job descriptions put out on the website, so I decided, oh, let me go look at what those are. So the first one I looked at was the Public Works Assistant. So, I know I didn't make copies for everybody, it's in the backup. The job description, it starts with essential job functions. And this is how it reads. So if I was trying to find a job at the City of Archer, I would be like, what is going on here? So reader meters. I'm pretty sure if we kind of Google searched, we would want to say something like meter readers. The next thing it says, these are essential job functions. Check city well and stormwater ponds, clean city community center, city park, city hall as needed. This as needed is listed on like multiple essential job functions. It needs to be wordsmithed to attract an employee to the city. And this is not inventing stuff. You can go and just find already done job descriptions for this exact position and just tweak it slightly. But it would put us in such a better light with our communities and those that we're competing against to try to bring people into our city to work for us. For example, mow road sides and stormwater ponds when needed. No, it's roadside and stormwater vegetation management.
As assigned, yeah.
Well, this as needed, just get rid of it all. Then the next part says education and training required. And here's, this is under education. And here's what, this is under education and training. Florida driver's license, high school diploma or GED. Pursue training as requirement by the public works director. Those aren't education and training required, those are qualificat- I mean, we need to reword this. Then, potential hazard exposure, okay, working conditions, you can list that, physical requirements, um, that can be like, um, under the working conditions, it's just, I would ask that the staff look at this and come up their best that they can with a better description, put them in the correct buckets. Then ask if it has to be your city commission to review it, I'm happy to review it, but we shouldn't be getting this after it's already been published. And then the very bottom of the ending of this, it says, the top of it says, position description. And then on the very end, the final note says disclaimer, job profiles are not intended, it, it's job description, so which one is it? And these are just me looking at this real quickly, and so, again, it sounds petty, it sounds like I'm picking on everyone and I'm not. It's just that we, these are the little low-hanging fruit that we can make a big difference on. So I would ask that staff be instructed to rewrite this, clean it up as well as they can, circulate it with their other staff, especially the director of, um, public works director. I would think that individual would wanna have say in what this is. Um, that person, I think, should have teeth in the game here, if that's how you're supposed to say it. So the next one, that's the public works assistant. The next one is the city manager position. If you wanna take one and pass it down. So this one, um, I don't know what the heck happened here, because I remember being in a public meeting and we talked about this position job ti- um, description. Let me read this. This position requires directing city staff, coordinating municipal services and supervising activities across multiple departments, including finance and financial P and L, sound balanced budgeting. I don't know why that's just got inserted there. We're talking about departments and now we're just throwing in these words, financial P and L, sound balanced budgeting. Then it goes on to talk about human resources, which is a department. These words just, and I highlighted them on the piece of paper I sent, just got entered into this document in no reason, like, there's no random reason why these are in here. Um, again, then key responsibilities under number two. It says, manage and coordinate the work of departments, including sound balanced budgeting, review of monthly P and L. They're not departments, I'm not sure how that got in there, that needs to be scrubbed. Uh, I think we talked about the importance that this manager has to understand financial statements, but it's not just, not that it belongs in this sentence, but it's not just P and L, it's all financial statements. Your, your manager needs to understand balance sheet, um, your, um, income loss, your, um, all counts payable, receivables, how you're booking things, that's, the city manager needs to have sound accounting experience and understand all that, not just a P and L. P and L is just one statement on your financials. Then under key responsibility, number eleven was added, requires standing, sitting, bending in minimum of twenty, twenty-five hours a week on the job. That's as a key responsibility, that's not a key responsibility. Then qualifications, here we're saying balance, bachelor's degree in public administration, business administration or related field. That's great, I, I think that's perfectly fine. And then we put in parentheses, master's degree preferred. Why? We don't need a, doesn't have to be that, I, I don't know why we add that wording there. Here we go again, number two on qualifications. It says ten years progressive responsible experience, municipal government, that's great, at least five years in senior management role, that's great. And then here we just add, as it relates to a balanced budget and a monthly P and L comparison. Don't know why that's in there. Under some other qualifications, it says, um, again, proficient in experience and balanced budget plan and preparation is added in there. Um, it says, knowledge of Florida municipal law and ordinances is highly desirable. No, it's a must, that's something that you need to have your city manager aware of that, not just desirable. I said I wouldn't go on too much here, um.
You're almost finished.
So reasonable, under important note.
Yep.
Reasonable accommodations will be made for otherwise qualified individuals with disabilities. That's great. I don't think we do that here in the City of Archer. And, so I'm not sure why we point that out. I'm okay with keeping it, but, I mean, we should be doing, if that's what we're really gonna do. Then number seven, the City of Archer is an equal opportunity employer and complies with the Americans with Disability Act. The city provided reasonable accommodations to qualified individuals with disabilities, encourage both prospective and current employees. Why are we putting current employees in your job description for your city manager? It just, it's just the wording is just, I, I don't like it, it doesn't flow. So again, I ask that mayor, that you direct the staff to clean this up, get it off of the website, repost it after we have multiple people review. And I'm, again, happy to help anyway in, um, that review process. So it wasn't anything that needed, um, a vote. It's just, uh, trying to explain something that I think is important, that these type of items, we need to be very clear and try our hardest to make sure that they, you know, represent a great city. Um, I'm done with that one, I don't know if you're gonna ask for public comment or anything, um, and I can go to my next if. Oh, actually, the employment application was the last item in there. So, I'm sorry. So the employment application, if you wanted to take one, pass it down if you feel like it. It's so old. So it talks about dates of attendance for your university and the credit hours, who cares? Like, are you really gonna go, City of Archer's gonna go test to make sure that you applied to that university and actually did twenty hours? I mean, it doesn't make any sense, it just needs to be cleaned up. Job-related training, again, it wants to know like specific dates. I get training completed, yes, that's fine. Then it goes into, and these are the big ones. So, background information. Have you ever been convicted of felony? You know, we hear all these all the time. I'm not saying you have to get rid of all those, but do we do anything with them? So if someone says yes to any of that, what are we doing? Are we, do we actually pay for a background check? I would love to know that.
It's presented to the attorney and the attorneys do the vetting.
Okay, okay, well, that's good to know.
As our past exercise, what we've done, Commissioner Fiore.
And then this one, I, I would argue does not belong, selective service system regi- uh, registration. This is not for municipalities, um, like us, that is not required, I don't know why we even have it in here. It needs to, that whole section needs to be removed. Then on certification, and maybe this is the attorney's, it, it talks about the fitness of employment by employers. And for what I look up, that's saying basically like the physical, mental and emotional ability from prior employees, uh, employers, like, we would reach out to a prior employer and ask for those type of questions, that's how I'm reading it, I don't think that should be in there as well. Then the last page of our job application talks about veterans' preference. I'm all for it, but do we do that? Do we actually say you are going to be considered because of a veteran? And if we do, that's wonderful, um, but I don't know if we do that, so if we don't, then we shouldn't be putting it in here. And then the very bottom, it has a survey, allow the following information, but not mandatory, and it asks questions like, are you white, black, Asian, native, Hispanic? Why do we have that? Female, male? Yeah, that needs to be just completely gone. We don't care, cause you're just a person, that needs to be just gone. Okay, now I'm done with that, that item.
Okay, can, can I just move us forward with the actions? If, if you go through and do most of the deletions on this job description, would you date it as a revised edition? Number the pages, and this employment application, and again, this is my opinion, I'm sorry, but this, this is driven by legal review or contracted attorneys. I know we accept it or we don't accept it, but I would like them to review this and ensure that those recommendations coming from you that are appropriate. Mister Ireland, I don't know if you wanna speak to that or not, but this is something we've used.
I'll pass it on.
Sir?
Not my copy?
I'll pass it on, that'll be fine, thank you very much.
Not to slow it down at all, Commissioner Fiore, but just for their review, for whatever reason, and their recommendations. Cause we've already submitted, had the, some of these submitted back to us, right, and the candidates. We have four candidates in two weeks, one that's fully, uh, completed all of the package. But we have three other candidates that are, have, uh, either sent resumes or in the application process with this, which, I, I, I'm amazed that we have four in two weeks of postings, you know, people of interest. I, I stand corrected because I said this was gonna take longer than normal and there are still interested parties that are some distant, some within our.
Are you relating, referencing the city manager position?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm specific to this, I.
So this morning, there was one that submitted all the correct paperwork, but now there's four?
That, there are four total that have either sent a resume in or.
Or, there's one that called, but I, so I don't have any paperwork from my hand.
Right, that's my latest update as of today.
Yes.
Just preparing for this meeting, just to be able to share with our constituents in the audience, we have four interested candidates in the part-time position. They either have completed their entire packet or parts of it, or contacted us with interest, which.
Are you opening up for citizen comment?
I, I just.
Not yet.
Not really, because this is an exercise to get this revised and brought back to us for review and approval.
I'm not gonna go into wordsmithing, cause that's, the attorneys need to do that. But I'm concerned to make sure we have all the, the essential job duties listed. So for example, uh, somebody needs to look at the city charter and make sure that in the, in, in the job description, it's all in there, cause it's not in this. So for example, uh, the, the, uh, the city manager is the chief administration officer. The city manager is also the, um, uh, the, the planning and zoning person. Uh, the city manager is also, uh, needs to be able to perform duties as a city clerk. I mean, these are really key positions. There are also the, uh, planning, I say planning and zoning, what's the other one? Fin- yeah, uh, finance and, uh, um, what is the other one? You know, when, when you, when you don't have your, your house straight or do your.
Code.
Code, thank you, thank you, that's what I'm trying to hit. I'm having, I'm having a senior moment. But that's the other thing, is the.
Code administrator.
Yeah, code administrator. Those are really key positions that are not even, the only thing we don't say is, you have to be at the city meetings. That's com- that's completely absent from this, as, as a major job description. So please, go through the charter and make sure we hit those things. Okay?
Thank you.
Brenda Skinner, I just have one quick one. On the employment application.
For which one?
The employment application. Um, if you look under the general instructions for completing the application, it says, sign, uh, your name in the cer- certification section. And I think that was one of the sections you were talking about and you didn't know why it was there and why, why it needed to be there. But it needs to be there because that's where you're signing your name, basically to say that everything I've said in this is true and legal and that you may, um, they may have, that you're giving permission for them to go back and verify any of that information. So that does need to stay in there.
Absolutely, it was just some wording within that section, but I totally agree, yeah, you need to have.
I just wanna make sure that that wasn't.
Yeah, no, no.
Lori Castello, citizen, I hope we're not hiring another public works, we don't need it. We're keeping the contract with the mowing si- people. And I noticed in the job description, we're not asking for any qualifications, carpentry, um, uh, light plumbing, I mean, anything. This is why we keep getting people that are not qualified to do the job. They don't do fencing, they don't do sidewalks, they don't do, I mean, there's so much that they don't do. We have to make sure these public works people are qualified. I've been up here a million times stating this. We need to have some qualifications, we need to be asking for the basic, thank you.
Say something to that. If you're gonna ask for all that, you can't pay that person a minimum wage, so we, we need to re- have to relook at that, cause there's no way I would do that for no fourteen dollars an hour, so that's unrealistic in my opinion.
Plumbers helper makes more than the base of that, of what we're offering.
This is my last time up here, I'm going home.
Don't say that, don't say that.
You're vetted.
Under the, um, employment, the public works employment, you have that we supply pants, boots, jeans. Your budget, we said no to. We said no to everything but the shirts. So that needs to be taken out of there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good night.
So in retro review, we're gonna take the city manager position, make the edits, put a revision date on it, bring it back to us December eighth, notify any of the candidates, this is, you know, the newly revised job description. The application, if you would, Mister Ireland, have legal just review it, based on any review knowledge that was provided tonight, recommendations. And on the job description for the public works assistant, just revise that. But, but please put a revision date on, on each one.
I will, I don't know when I'll get to it, but I know, um, Robert brought up a long time ago, they all need to be re.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, they need to be all relooked down.
Standardized, because we're doing it with this one.
I agree with you.
Now we need to look at the public works supervisor, the public works director.
I have a, okay, one.
Yes, ma'am.
One more clarification, so on this, I'm taking everything in yellow, well, mine's yellow, out. And I'm putting on number nine for the knowledge of the ordinances and all that, it's changed highly, highly desirable to required.
Yeah, yes.
Is that what we're doing, or what word do you want?
Number nine, I would say required.
Required.
Okay.
Versus highly desirable was required.
Okay. And the ones that you have highlighted, Commissioner Fiore, the numbers, what were you doing with those again, four, seven?
Rewording.
Rewording, okay.
Well, number four and number seven is the same thing.
Right. But what did you want done with it?
Just delete four.
Fix it up.
Delete four and make seven, six, cause it's same as they did.
Biggest issue here are what's not listed as requirements for this position as far as their duties as stated in charter. And then everywhere you have sound balanced budgeting, review of monthly P and L, it's not in the proper sentences. It's just plugged in randomly throughout the document.
And so, what Mister Lewandowski's input was, on those key administrative roles in the subcategory should be under key responsibilities because of the size of our city. Code administrator. Yes, the, the three.
So we're adding twelve, for, for, for the city clerk, the city treasurer, the code.
Yes, I would put that under the key responsibilities. And knowledgeable of following municipal charter, period. So he doesn't, he or she doesn't say, what's charter? If we, if we look at a candidate like that, I, I need to go home, so. And again, just Commissioner Fiore, that we, I spoke with Deanna today, cause the, you know, it's been several, six years, seven years since we did this exercise. But I was just reviewing with Miss Altop, just to disclose it, these candidate packages go to legal for then doing all the background checks, because we don't even wanna waste our time or constituents to meet them if they're not vetted. I mean, I'm using the word vetted, but background checks, solid, you know.
Why is that a legal responsibility? So we pay our legal service.
We've always done it that way, because then they're neutral to then sending those back for us to then score those candidates of choice.
It's just, it's just a.
Created by legal.
It's just a service that you just go online, you pay like twenty-five dollars per, um, person and you put in their information and it spits out if their record.
I guess it's just cause we've done it that way with the last six city managers.
And we already paid Foles and Walker.
And we already paid five thousand dollars a month and it's within the services that they're contracted for.
Okay.
And it keeps.
Do they charge us extra, uh, is it within their?
They haven't.
But we also, no offense, but we're also waiting months on documents that we're asking from our legal counsel and we're gonna bog them down with something like this, that I think city staff can just punch in a couple of things online, but that's my opinion. I, I'll move on.
But that, that's the exercise we go through as we count, as we capsule these interested parties, and they're full packets. You do that as, in your deputy clerk role to ensure that it's complete or we really don't have an interest. You do that as in your deputy clerk role to ensure that it's complete or we really don't have an interest, basically, is my concern and like opinion as you do. If they can't complete the package, then what are we looking at here as a candidate? So don't spend a lot of time on that, but certainly when those packets are done, we determine when we want to close that posting. That's a decision we make. Do we want to keep, you know, we have four or six and that's why they go to legal or have been to see if they're vetted or not, or do we want to keep it open for another four to eight weeks or whatever to find other candidates.
So when you, I don't want to keep talking about this, but when you post on your website, I would hope that you put this is open for so much period of time so that your candidate knows how much time they have to apply instead of you randomly like say, oh, we have seven. I'm good with that. Let me stop this now.
What I did, well, on the sites that you upload, it automatically puts a date in there. I was couldn't overwrite. That's why our website has December twenty-second. But yes, I can change our website, but I can't touch these other sites that I have uploaded to.
Because I have a block that's, it's to be, which is usually three months, most of them, from my ninety days, hundred and twenty days. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to just keep going? The next agenda or do you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. The next agenda that I put on is agenda review. So I wanted to have a conversation with the commission on what their taste would be if they would be willing to do an agenda review meeting prior to the city commission meetings. These meetings could take place via Zoom. Public can call in. It doesn't mean you have to be physically in this building for those meetings. It would, best practice would be two weeks prior to today's meeting. And that's where we literally agenda the the meeting for today. So it'd be two weeks ago, we would have sat and talked through this. So we would know what's on this. It would give input from your citizens to say that we really need to talk about X, Y, Z, and we would be able to put that on. I don't see why, based on the dates of what I'm seeing, your bank statements and things like that, that that couldn't happen in that timeframe, but again, that's why I wanted to open it up for discussion with this commission to see if they're even willing to do and commit to something like that. And it's like a twenty-minute conversation. We're not talking like an hour either. I mean, if it takes an hour, but it's not like we're going to, you know, just, we're not saying, let's talk for two hours about this. Let's just say, this is what we want. Yes, this is perfect. Move on.
What's the feeling of the of the dais?
So you're just asking to be able to review the agenda? And I think you made comments also that the public would be able to.
Yep, so you would, it would be a Zoom.
Be able to zoom in as well. Okay, are you asking that they be able to comment or not?
Um, yeah.
Or is this strictly for us? Because if you were asking for comment periods, that's going to be like another meeting altogether. So I want to know what you're asking for.
Um, what do you normally see for, do you see comment for those meetings?
If you're going to have a public meeting, you don't have to allow comments and it's got to be a public meeting.
It's got to be notified.
You need two of y'all to get together.
Right. Yeah, I don't see the issue with that. I mean, why wouldn't we want, if the citizens really want to see something on the agenda, I don't know why. You stick to your rules. You have three minutes. I I think it would prevent us from waiting till when we get the agenda the way it is today. I think it was posted, most of it was posted on, I think, Thursday. And then it has asterisk saying that, you know, more is to come on Monday. So I'm literally online. I'm like, okay, is it posted? Is it updated? Is it updated? There was one time it got updated past four o'clock in the afternoon. I wasn't even able to view it.
And that was on the dais.
And that's how to prevent some of that from happening. So that would be my recommendation to schedule two weeks prior. And if two weeks is too aggressive, maybe one week prior to our already calendared commission meetings via Zoom.
So we just went from two meetings a month back to one. That was way too much for me, so I'm out. I will not be, I'm not going to say I'm going to be available for that because it was taking a lot of my personal time that I needed for my family. I am going to agree with Commissioner Bailey on that one just due to the fact that we will have to have public comments on that. And so, you know, you're hoping for twenty minutes, but that can go for two hours like we've already experienced with the other meetings. So I do not want to commit to that either. But I appreciate the, you know, bit of, and I don't think the public have a hard time putting things on the agenda. And there's not too many times, I don't think, when there is something pending that we don't know that's on the agenda. Is there? I don't remember too many times.
No, because usually.
It doesn't happen a whole lot.
Yeah, if it's pending or need our attention, the Deanna or one person from the office will contact us.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't think it's, it's, you know, it's been a really, really, that hasn't been a really big problem for us. And then the public doesn't really have a hard time as far as I know adding something to the agenda. If they had a time, it makes it on there. So I'm going to have to say no to that one.
Commissioner Penny, any comment?
You know, I was the only one who voted for the two min, two min, two meetings a month. So till we get everything clear, whatever we have to do, the two means, one means Zoom. As I was just speaking to her, we got, we got rid of Zoom. So we got got to see what the cost is to get Zoom back because we can do it by Zoom or we have to come in. I'm 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 willing to do it because till we get everything straight and we back on board where we need to be, I'm I'm for the two meetings, whatever we have to do. I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. That's true.
Okay, my my feedback and just inquiry to you, Ms. Altop, is when do you start preparing for the base agenda of our meetings? On the Monday before the Thursday closing of it for finish?
On the Monday before it, I send the attorneys all the stuff I need from them or ask them questions about anything.
To be able to agenda our meeting.
Folder with the whole thing I keep.
And that might take Tuesday and a Wednesday to get all that back, correct? I mean, that's why.
Right. And then all the other stuff I'm needing for me to do, correct? Yes.
For your specialists to do or Dallas Lee to input his data. So it is technically Thursday.
Correct. But to me, I don't see any reason why Commissioner Fiori can't meet with me or anybody as long as it's just separate. If you want to meet with me about the agenda, if you have citizens or stuff like you want to add or whatever.
To totally disclose, and again, not to have us one-on-one-on-one on you, but it is like, my concern was, I I'll just give the example. I was rece, I received the the Ari Arnold contract for the surplus property several weeks back. Like I was just supposed to sign that. And I just told Deanna, I'm not doing this. It's going back to legal for their final review and for this to be agenda for my colleagues to review this. I mean, that was, I didn't ask for a special meeting to ask y'all, can we do that? I just wasn't going to do that as the mayor representative in a weak mayor system. Do you, you know? So in the same way, any other concerns, I come to you, I usually call and just say, when can we brief for a few minutes? Kind of give her that courtesy because she's got her normal duties and itinerary for for the day or the week or whatever. But I build that time in there based on your abilities and usually you're very accommodating. And then we can move forward with that, whether it's.
So what is the reason for that, to only start this process on that Monday?
It it's not. Sometimes it's, I mean, I'm sorry, I'll.
Sometimes it's before. It depends on how, what the project or the item on the agenda is. Sometimes you have to start doing work on it. Time, having enough time.
Okay, so, so for today's example, if two weeks ago we met on this agenda and we all knew that we wanted that update from the attorney, we would have had the opportunity to say, attorney told us that we were going to get that explanation. It's now been two months. Get on the phone with the attorney to find out what the explanation is.
And that needs to be a high priority with the attorney report, yeah.
Then it would have made the agenda properly, not that you did it wrong, but it would have made it because we would have had that conversation prior with a potential timeframe to remedy the situation. That's just an example why I was bringing it up. So, but again, it was a discussion.
And you're asking for our consensus to collectively be a part of that versus it just being your input saying this really needs to be done. Do you have a problem doing it that way?
Well, for transparency to your citizens, that's mostly what, no, I don't have a problem contacting Deanna, asking for something. Not at all. But again, being transparent, being able to have the conversation with the rest of the commission at the same time, I think makes for a stronger argument and put more meat into the agenda.
And the continuity up here at this dais, you know what direction we're going. I understand. I mean, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I just wanted.
Mr. Mayor, again, I I I said, we just, we just, right, and we just, we just tried those two meetings a month, which is going to equal out to be in the same thing as having a Zoom meeting, you know, two weeks prior. It's 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 the same thing. And we just tried having, and we we accomplished it, we accomplished nothing with that. And that's why we went back to the one meeting a month. So when we're seeing a Zoom meeting, like to talk about the agenda, a pre-agenda meeting, I think that, I don't think we're going to accomplish any more than we're accomplishing right now. So you're just going to be two or three hours on a Zoom meeting. And then we're going to have the same thing again in two weeks. It's, so that's that's still just my opinion. I, you know, no, for me.
Recommendation, just Commissioner Fiori, if you'd like to make a motion and we could carry this forward, have a second.
No, I don't think it's necessary. It was, it was for a discussion. My echo in? Oh, that's okay. No, I thought that was me.
It's okay.
You're good.
It's a different voice. I hadn't heard that voice.
Yeah, I was like, how am I echoing like that? No, it was for discussion purposes with the commission. So I don't need to, I'm I'm willing to go to the next item if you are ready.
No, wait.
All right. Next one. Public comment. Okay. So I listened to the meeting last month and that was torture. And I'm referencing, and I know everyone in this room knows, I'm referencing to mayor with all respect, the conversation you and Ms. Lopez had for her item. And she was correct when she stated you weren't letting her finish speaking. And I know that you were passionate about getting your point across and she was passionate to get her point across. But I'm here, it was so hard to watch. In fact, I was online saying, what is happening here? And I'm being completely honest. And so this agenda item is asking for two things, that we don't overspeak when they're, you know, don't overtalk when they're speaking. Even if it's just agreeing out loud, just slows down the commenter when they're trying to make their point. And then the second part of that is the grumbling and the heckling without your microphone on that happens. And I've had it when I'm sitting over there, standing over there, happened to me almost every single time I was up at that podium speaking. If we have something to say, we need to be transparent and have enough guts to say it out loud inside the microphone. So my ask with this agenda is that we respect the citizens, allow them to speak without interrupting them. Same with citizens, obviously can't be yelling at us as well. But, and the the talking and the grunting underneath your breath when they're trying to speak and get their point across. So that's what that was about.
Duly noted.
Can I say something on that? And I I agree with you, Commissioner Fiori. And I think also that when they're speaking, let every citizen, and I think this will help us. If they, if we, you know, time for public comments, just let everybody come up, have their comment. If we can, if we can not try to address everybody, and I know that's what the citizens want us to comment right behind when they say something. I think it's best that during that certain period, they come up and talk, everybody, whether it's five, six, for that three minutes, cut them off for that three minutes. And at five, you know, because that way you're equal, it's fair to everybody and cut them off. And if it's five or six, I'm just like the whole five or six, one at a time come, then we can respond. But I think when we take, we take up so much time trying to respond to each person. And and I've watched other meetings and a lot of them are just not done that way. They let everybody have their comments on that particular thing. And then they come back and kind of discuss it, address it a little bit and move forward. And I think that's something else that we can also think about doing and not just trying to address each person because they're looking at us for an answer every time they ask them. They're looking at, they're looking at Deanna, all they're looking at. And that's not fair to Deanna. We don't need to be taking all that time because some things we need to go back and look at.
It's no longer.
Some things we need to ponder, right?
It's interrogation.
Right. And and I think that's something with our dais that we also need to put in place. Don't come ask questions, da, 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 because I I don't know if too many other meetings are conducted like that. If five or six want to come up and have comments on a certain thing that we're on, certain topic, and this is for the citizen, five or six come up, have your comments, then we can address it, discuss it, or we can staple it and bring your answers back later. Because we don't accomplish anything like that as far as I'm concerned, but go ahead.
So the bringing it back later constantly is what we're told. And I can't imagine that every single question, well, I'm being dramatic here. There's so many questions that staff should have the answer to when asked instead of being told, you know, I'm not going to answer that or we'll have to bring it back. Then when bringing it back, it gets lost.
Yep.
And I I mean, just the, my public records request taken five months, that that can't continue. So they want answers. And I don't know why we wouldn't want to provide them faster answers, in my opinion.
Great question. So my, again, my statement was let everybody come to the mic, ask their questions. Then we can address, once everybody has come up, we can address that question if we had the answer right then. But to come up and like you're interrogating everybody or interrogating Deanna or interrogating, you know, because you have one person come and they say, well, I want to answer this many questions. And I was, and then we got to deal, Deanna, deal with everyone, one by one question before you know it, you've been up for ten minutes. And I'm just saying that everyone come up, we want the respect from the citizens as well as we should respect them. So I'm just saying, you know, most of the meeting, five or six people, how many want to comment on that particular topic that we're on? They could come up, ask their questions. Yes, if we have the answer, let's provide them the answers once they all have asked their questions and we can address them. There may be times sometimes when we don't have the answer right then. But I'm just, you know, I'm just saying there's a, we we just need to do things a different way. And I think this was also bring about the respect that Commissioner Fiori that you were asking for. I I think everybody can be respected in that way. But but when you feel like, and that may be where some of the mumbling and grumbling is coming from. Sometimes when somebody's talking, people feel like they got to say something, and we don't have to do that. So I, you know, so I I just feel like that. Yeah, if we if we handle it that way, time them for those three minutes. Give everybody equal time.
Correct.
And not let anybody else go over, go ten minutes because that's not fair to the next person that wants to come in. And I think we'll be better off.
Correct.
We can also respect each other.
Something that I've tried to reinvent, if you will, is on our old business, things that we don't have provided answers, but we would like our administrator to follow up with, it becomes, so that we don't skip things, it becomes old business that needs to be attended to. Even if it's several meetings before it comes up, we're not letting go of something that's been either brought to us or something we've spoken to here. And we don't have an answer to that particular meeting. So to me, that that's something you've started on the agenda and it's visible so that we don't get too far behind with follow-up items that need to address. Yes, ma'am?
So I want to say it is important to give each of the persons at the podium their three minutes. If, and that is what we voted on, three minutes. Now. Now, all of the ethics trainings that I've been to, they state, you, whatever amount of time we have set aside, we give the, the speaker that amount of time. We do not have to answer them at the moment. I do like the idea of us listening to everything, and then coming up with, you know, giving the answers that we do have. The other thing is, just because you're at the podium and asking questions, or making a comment, does not mean that it is, um, a public request, or something, um, that we need to answer. So, there, there's a lot that have to be discussed and, and talked about. So, I'd, I'd like, um, instead of doing it individually, and when I say that, sitting here asking multiple times, is there anybody else? They can somehow come to the front, so we know who those people are that are going to speak, and, um...
Finished.
And give them their three minutes. Yes, and then answer the questions. I like that idea, because a lot of times, we have people coming up saying the same thing, and then you, we're repeating the same answer as well. So, that will alleviate that as well.
I'm like, um, Joni White said earlier, I'm going to try to hush after this one. I want to also say that I know, um, so many people have been hard on Deanna. I requested this, I requested that, I, but can I remind our citizens, and those of us that are up here? Y'all know how many people used to be in that office, that ran the office? There was always the accountant, the clerk, city manager, and the person at the front desk, the receptionist. Four. We've been working with three. She's been doing two jobs. She was the clerk. So, she's, she's the clerk, and she's the interim city manager. She has a lot on her plate. And I'm going to say, thank her, thank you so much, Deanna. No wonder she has the backlog, no wonder she can't get everything to everybody in the time, uh, that they want them. We, she, she's been doing two or three jobs back there. So, we, we can't always just come up to the podium and be so hard on her, but I requested this, and I wanted that. She's, I believe, I believe, that she's doing the best that she can. So, we need to learn how to appreciate people. Her job was city clerk, it wasn't manager, but she's been trying to do both of those jobs for us, while we tried to save money from hiring a city manager right away. And nobody's really thought about that with her. She was helping us save money. Otherwise, we would have been paying for a city manager and a city clerk all at the same time. So, she has really helped us out for this last year. And I don't think people should just, just constantly bam, bam, bam on her, because she's, she's really done a lot. She's been handling the city clerk as, as much as she can. So, uh, 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 and I apologize that she haven't been able to get everything to everybody in a timely manager, but y'all, she's wearing two hats, and I just want to say thank you, Deanna.
Ditto.
You want to go to finance?
And I'm done.
I'm just...
Thanks. The next one was a financials update. So, I wanted to see more formal monthly updates from city staff on the financial status. So, here are some examples. When a bank reconciliation has been finalized, let us know, and everything I'm listing here are examples, and this can be just formatted into a monthly report of some sort. It doesn't need to be pages of explanation, it just, like, bullet points. So, bank reconciliation status, what month are we through? What is our estimated time to complete? What are some hurdles that we're finding that's a common theme in these bank reconciliations? Those would be some things... Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. The status of the 24 and 25 audit. So, what are the questions at the, and I think Deanna actually added something to the backup tonight? What, but what are they asking for? What are they seeing? What are the discrepancies that they're seeing between 24 and 23, those large swings in revenues and expenditures? Let us know what those are, keep us informed, more transparency is what I'm looking for. Major financial changes, such as the status of the new insurance. So, I saw that, that came through at a new payment level, um, that's great, but it'd be, instead of me having to dig in to say, oh yeah, we finally are paying the new insurance, it'd be nice to be told that. There was a FEMA reimbursement for a storm, it would have been nice to have been told what that FEMA, um, storm was, um, and that, yeah, we got it. There should be a budget to actual reports. If you're able to enter transactions that come out in that transaction list, then you're using your software. Every single payment, every single deposit should be entered into the system, instead of trying to go back months later to determine what was involved in that deposit, or what checks were that, for that month. It, everything should go through the financial system at that point, that it's being paid or deposited. So, there's no reason why we can't have a budget to actual report. I don't care if it needs to be in Excel. That's what I'm doing right now. I'm literally going through your bank statements, I'm going online to get your deposits from the state, putting them in the correct buckets, I'm looking at your payroll. Granted, you don't pay, and we've talked about this before, depends on which fund you believe has enough money to pay the bills, so it's not where it's technically being budgeted, but I'm keeping track of that. There's no reason why we can't just have an Excel file if we're saying that your software system isn't working properly. But the software system, the fact that you are getting transactions in the system tells me that you should be able to get the remainder transactions at the time that they happen, not later on when you're trying to reconcile. Um, so a budget to actual report. Outstanding transaction, it would be so helpful to see a list of accounts payable. What are we sitting on? What do we think we don't have enough money to pay that month that we know is going to be due, maybe even past due? But, you know, management feels like there's just not enough money to pay it, and we're going to have to hold on to it. And then how long have we been holding on to it? 30, 60, 90, 180 days? What is your accounts payable backlog? 26 budget cuts. So, we went, we adopted a budget, and we specifically said, this, 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 this is going to be cut. So, give us an update on a monthly basis. So, we said we were going to cut our overtime as very little as possible, so give us an update. What is your overtime total for the year on a budget of $2,000? We've already hit 80% of that 2,000. Why did we hit that? There must be a reason. We had a, a storm. You know, there's easy ways to explain that, but be transparent to the other cuts that we said. We talked about the cemetery contract, we're doing that the right way, we're probably going to have to adopt to keep it into the budget. But that's the updates that we want to see. Again, overtime, we should see a report on that all the time. And I think Deanna does this, the employment status, um, you know, are we hiring?
Current.
And things like that. So, I need, I want to see, and I would hope everyone else up here wants to see more of the data, the whys, what is staff seeing? What are, you, you know, especially she put in, Deanna put in here, um, 23, 24 variances in the revenues expenditures. If we could get a little bit more specific, is it, I mean, are we talking like $100,000? I mean, what are we talking about? Um, it, just more detail would be really appreciated. And I'm happy to help with some type of formatting if the staff would like. But again, that's, I just wanted to express that I would like to see something like that.
Did you work with Ms. Ott?
May I ask something, Commissioner Fiori? Yes, if you could do an outline, or like, kind of give me a brief of what you want, and I just lost the second thing I was going to say. I'm so sorry. It's how long I've been here.
You were going to talk about the audit?
Yes. Do you want me just to forward what's out, the spreadsheet? Because it's a lot of money, and I don't even know how to, I'm just saying, I don't know how to explain it, because I wasn't in charge...
Yeah, I would love to see it.
...of '23, so I don't know why it's 100,000 difference from '23. I really don't, and I don't know how to back it to find why it's so off. So, yes, I would appreciate that.
So, I, I have a question, because, um, I think Fiori said that we weren't using the system, or it's broken. Are you talking about Edmondson?
No, I, I gave up on that, I don't know when we were going to go with that.
So, we're not using it still? The Edmondson?
We are not, not for finance.
Because nobody knows how to do it correctly, or...
Once we, we got everything in there, then we are going to train them, we're all going to do it, and then, yes, we're going to try it down, since we have to pay for it for a few more years, we want to use it. Because even Loretta, which I'm sure Karen will agree, any accounting software, she said, you don't have these issues, QuickBooks. I don't like QuickBooks at all, personally, not for government work, but she said, it's, it's not good for government. But she's not struggling, but it's very difficult for her, because she's used to accounting software. Yes, she knows QuickBooks, but she just said, accounting software that connects to your billing system is like the best, because it communicates back and forth. So, now we have two systems still, and it's very, it's not a paper.
And she's familiar with Edmonds, is she not?
Yeah.
I mean, she, she's Edmund skilled, isn't she?
No, 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 she's a lot of different software. But Edmonds is kind of laid out like QuickBooks, there's so many different cascading windows and all that, but, but no, that would be appreciated, Commissioner Fiori.
Sure. And I have one more item, Mayor, if you want me to continue.
Sure.
Okay. The next item, um, we need to come up with a plan for the Wild Spaces, Public Places, and Infrastructure Tax. We, my recommendation is that, um, you direct staff to calendar some public workshops, so you're sitting at, and I believe it was 180-some thousand dollars, sitting in that account. And the county said, never said that we couldn't use that, those funds. We can continue to use those funds, you just have to use them in the proper manner. And if you recall, Dallas started a new fund where the money comes into your general fund, and then they transfer it directly out to the Wild Spaces Fund. So, since 2025, that has been just depositing into the Wild Spaces Fund. Now, we don't know what our fiscal year '24 audit is going to look like, so we're probably going to owe even more Wild Spaces money. And we're currently, I think, around 300 in the hole with the county now, and we're not showing any deposit. So, the Wild Spaces infrastructure, you, and I'm probably telling you something you already know, so you submit a plan, a project to the county, they say, yes, you can use those funds. But it's not just go put concrete down, it can be, the, you can charge the person, your public works director, that is in charge of that project, that individual's time to the Wild Spaces, when he's working on that project. So, what you're doing is two things. That could be showing a transfer from your general fund to your Wild Spaces as an effort to pay back some of those funds. So, instead of paying your employee out of the general fund for those hours, you transfer over from the general fund to the Wild Spaces, and you're using that money. So, you're still having to pay for it out of general fund, but you're showing that you're making an effort to pay back, and that, the county needs to know that we have some type of plan to pay that back, and currently, we don't. I also recommend that we designate a certain amount of your ad valorem tax on a monthly basis to pay back that Wild Spaces. And I think the county, knowing that you're making an effort, would work with us on that, but we're making zero effort at this time.
And currently, we have just one account. This is something that by resolution, I, I want to bring up to legal, we need to create the payback Wild Spaces account. There's just one account that all the funds are going into. So, you cannot remedy and show, we...
Um, I didn't see where it said you had to have special funds for that. So, your Wild Spaces...
How do you demonstrate to the county, who is Big Brother, saying, we want to see you hit the 203,000 dollars?
Because you're going to show, you're going to show a transfer, you're going to show a general fund transfer in the amount of 10,000, making it up, $10,000 every month into your Wild Spaces, and it's tagged.
But if you created, I'm just saying, if you created that other account that you're funding that into, it's a very easy way for Big Brother, the county, to see that fundability.
No, you don't need to create funds for all transactions. You would create a revenue GL, and the revenue GL would state, you can name it specific, it would be, um, general fund repayment, Wild Spaces. And you're, and then you show, you're able to go through the system and show your trail.
Or surplus property sale, that we wanted to take that chunk of money and not operate with it, and put it in there for the payback. How do you transfer those guys?
Yes, so, it, again, it's the same exact thing. It's general fund...
But there needs to be a...
Transfer into the Wild Spaces, and that's what you're tracking. It's just that one GL. So, then this, the county comes...
We don't have that now, we do not have that now.
Well, no, I don't, I don't know any of your GLs, but I'm telling you, you don't need a whole separate fund for that transaction, is my whole, my whole point. But you, all you require to do is show that you're paying it back. So, you're paying it back, but it's not saying that you can't spend it properly. So, when I was talking about the salary, you paying it back as much as you can, and now you're charging things to your Wild Spaces. Some of that will be your director, public works director, and so that's coming out of your expenditures.
Right, with the current Wild Spaces, but the one that they're saying you need to, to build up that account by the 203,000 dollar shortfall, that you couldn't answer for when it was misused from '23 and '24, they're expecting to see that. That correction of those funds and transfer, whether you're doing it through a journal entry, or whether you're doing it with, with an account that's building up to show that and demonstrate that. I know I keep saying that, I understand it could be, but right now, we don't have that. We have monies that, that's coming in with our, going into our current monthly Wild Spaces, Public Places, building on the account that is from, the same account from '23 and '24. That's why it's where it's at. Because we're only getting $9,000 a month from Wild Spaces.
That's your, that's the current Wild Spaces...
Yeah, and it's all canoodled into one account.
Correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why I questioned that, and said, that, how can we, I mean, and that's where you're coming in, I understand what you're saying, you do transfers to start that new journal entry, of the 70-something thousand dollars that we had left, of which the difference was the 203 that they're now asking for, what are you demonstrating for payback? And that account has not been created for...
Okay, I don't, I, I'm, maybe I'm wrong on it, but I don't think you have to, perhaps you do have to show it different, different buckets.
You do, because otherwise, you're not going to demonstrate performance to the county to pay that back. If you're, if you're canoodling it, and I hate to use that terminology, into one account, there has to be a total account.
I wouldn't need, I wouldn't need multiple accounts to do that, but if that's how the city of Archer wants to do it, if I have a GL that's showing that this is paying back this for a specific thing, that's enough for me to show it. But you're sitting, so let's stop talking about the past one. You're sitting now on new revenue that you need to come up with a plan to spend, and that's basically what this, um, agenda item was.
That's what you're addressing here, is the current, not...
Yeah, and I was giving you some ideas on how you can also continue to spend by showing that you're transferring, but that will have to be a longer conversation. The, and when you have these workshops, I really recommend that you have, like, your public works director involved in these meetings, because that individual should, your whole publics work department, they're, they're the ones that are out there on the ground seeing what's needed. Granted, the citizens see it as well, but I don't know every piece of Archer that needs road repair or building repairs, and those are the people that are on the ground, you know, running. So, I would ask that you make sure that those individuals are part of those conversations. So, the agenda was to start looking at calendar dates that we can start with these workshops, or designate one of these...
The current expensing Wild Spaces, Public Places, correct?
Right, I guess until the attorney responds with a letter to the county's letter, to see how they're interpreting, how they're expecting that to be refunded. But, yeah, the current Wild Spaces, this current fiscal year, the money you're getting, we need to come up with a plan on what projects to spend on that, yes.
By consensus, you all are favorable to a workshop for the current, so that we're all seeing the same tune, on the same page, on what we want to spend for Wild Spaces. I mean, that's part of the plan. And we could have a workshop date, not to create another meeting, but just have the public input, public works here.
Or you can designate one of these meetings, saying that...
To focus on, on just that, with public input, whichever you prefer. You want an agenda, it, and give enough time for us to have that input. And it doesn't have to be December, it could be the January meeting. So, you know, the notice is out there about Wild Spaces, and the guys in public works should be able to have the time to create their list.
So, so, the junior commission, they come every other month?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
They'll, they'll be here Janu-, they'll be here January? No, excuse me, December, February, April, sorry.
They're going to take 30 minutes.
Right.
Or we can definitely have, just have a separate workshop, or, I don't care, it can be on a...
Well, I, I, the reason...
I don't mind, I don't mind a workshop.
The reason I ask is, I guess it depends on how long of, of workshop we're trying to have, but I was thinking, just, you know, if we're going to do it on a meeting night, that we could do it on one of the nights when junior commission is not here. that we could do it on one of the nights when Junior Commission is not here.
Is not.
That, exactly, so we can do that at six o'clock.
So that'd be like January possibly. I mean, if we address, if we pretty much addressed the water rates and the waste, you know, with the plan with that, that could be short and brief. But it would form the format of the agenda itself. You just, you'd have to close it down and give us the adequate time for, for basically a workshop for the Wild Spaces. I mean, it could be.
To make that workshop more productive, staff should come with their recommendations. Not, not like a perfect list, but some really good recommendations.
Prior to.
Yeah, so we're not sitting up here trying to think of them on the fly. Yeah, and public notice it way in advance so that citizens have an opportunity to come with their lists that they're wanting to talk about, yeah.
I think it should be separate, two separate meetings. For, for, not at the same time, on the same day. I think, um, the workshop should be totally different from a city meeting.
The only thing with the workshop is we're not gonna be able to take actions when it's part of the agenda of a meeting. We can take all that feedback and then act on something.
Make a decision.
I mean, 'cause we have this aura over us that Archer's the slowest municipality in the state of Florida as far as action. So I'm sorry to insult everybody, but just ask any of our representatives or anybody.
I am insulted.
I'm sorry. I am too, I'm slamming myself, but I just got told that by a surveyor the other day. Oh, that's Archer, y'all, y'all move real slow, you know. Okay, so we got one wanting to workshop, what's the consensus of the other group to do it with?
So you're saying, uh, uh, Mayor, you're suggesting that we do it.
As an agenda item, reduce the other items where we can. So it's, it's, like I used to fuss at Zaria Folsen, you know, he'd have MNOP agenda items, and I'd say, Zaria, you know, get it back up to GHNI, and we can have a, a legal human meeting or whatever.
It can be used, like, for trees or helping to cut trees and stuff. Could it be used for something like that?
Park upgrade.
Dead trees taking away our parks.
I thought of that, Commissioner Green.
'Cause I know right there at that basketball court, I'm scared, them, them limbs gonna fall anything.
Again, feedback from Public Works and yourself and that little summary list I gave you had some of the things that, you know, and just share.
Is that something you can check on? I mean, is that something that it can be used for as well? Just, just, I'm just asking for when we come back and.
Park maintenance, upgrade.
Can we do it? 'Cause I know we said we can't use it for, uh, uh, for, just in a park or somewhere like our, um, water thing down there. We can't use it for stuff that's already there. But I just want to know if we can use it for, like, trees and dead trees and stuff.
I'm not sure, I know, I know every, whenever I ask Gina Peoples at the county, she always tells me, you have to build to prove, of course, it's for our citizens, but also you have to, not prove, so to speak, kind of, that it's a county impact. So with our removing trees is what I try to think, or whatever we wanna do, how does that impact all of the county? So, yes, it's for Archer residents, but also you have to address a county impact. That goes for infrastructure as well, so just, you gotta kinda think of it like that. It's not just for Archer residents, you have to have a county impact.
So it would be a safety of.
Splash pad being closed, and we can't utilize Wild Spaces to upgrade the splash, I mean, sorry, I'll change the terms. Upgrade the splash pad. I mean, it's not just repair, it's upgrade and maintenance, just like the fence replacements.
I don't know, I don't believe that's true, that you can't use that. You have, you have to submit a new project form to the county, in my opinion. Um, but your justification for cutting down all those trees in your personal park is because when you have people out in the parks playing and families, it's dangerous. So the betterment of the whole entire county using that park is safer.
'Cause it do be people there from, other than Archer, that's playing ball, especially on Sunday.
That's all I have for now.
January be the agenda for this thing? By consensus, if that gives staff time and Public Works to get their list and be able to post those and, and post on websites so the citizen can be, citizen can be apprised of that, you know, heavy agenda item and be able to share their thoughts. And it be something that we can not only just workshop it, but take possible actions to move forward, okay?
Also, uh, as Commissioner Fiore.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Fiore, 'cause I was kinda understanding what she was saying and not, 'cause she talking kinda fast. And, and I want her to, you know, better explain it, how she was saying, like, you could use some of the public work guys to do certain things and then, you know, pay it from a fund, then transfer it over there. Anyway, you were saying that it sounded like a good idea, but you're talking kinda fast, so it's just trying to get an understanding.
So your first step, your first step is to get your project approved. County says yes. So now you, you have a hundred-thousand-dollar project to go do a road. Your Public Works Director is spending twenty hours a week just specifically on that project. So his salary gets paid those twenty hours a week from your Wild Spaces. So my point of saying that is that you're not, the projects include salary. It's not just, you know, the project on the ground, it's anything involved with that project. So even to the point where Deanna is the manager of the director, and so she may have to have meetings with the director two hours, um, a week. So she would wanna put her two hours a week specific to that project being charged out of your Wild Spaces. So you have to really be good project managers and document, and it has to be documented every single hour that's being spent on that with justification. And so, and then the whole thing I was saying about the transfer, I was saying that that's a good way of showing the county that you're being proactive and trying to transfer back. But that's a different discussion because we think there's two different buckets, but, yeah. But my point is, you can pay for salaries out of the Wild Spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, repeat that horse today. Reports, Correspondents, and Communication.
You have some for my report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'll be real quick, I'll try to be real quick. So I think I've talked to some of you about the, the, sorry, the leak under the side, starting to break underneath the sidewalk in front of the Nazarene Church, like it did across from the post office. So the water line, yeah, is breaking all the way down, so the concrete repairs are starting to get hefty. So I was just asking if you guys wanna see, for us to go ahead and R, get RFP and get bids so we can see how much more it's gonna be from the thirty-four, eight forty-nine, I think we actually pay a little more. I think there was a change, or I think it was more towards thirty-seven, if I remember, for that repair. But, I mean, that's just looking forward, that's what we're looking for again, another large con, I mean, a large repair for a contractor coming to bore all that, all those lines up, and then our, you know.
And that's with the same contractor, or you're looking for another?
Well, I was gonna, we'd have to put it out for bid, 'cause it's gonna exceed the twelve, I mean, the, yeah, the twelve-five, no, the twenty-seven-five, most likely. For the RFP level. I was just, do you guys want us to waive and keep paying the concrete repairs? But I don't know where we'd get the forty, fifty thousand to pay for it. That's why I don't know if the infrastructure from the, the money from the county is considered a water line repair, I'm not sure.
You're talking about for Wild Spaces?
Well, the infrastructure fund, 'cause it's separate, so each, I don't know, I just, we have that repair coming up, and I think the concrete was twelve or sixteen hundred dollars, and that's literally two concrete blocks.
And that's just the one, one vendor that we're all priced from?
That we've been using, yes, and, yes.
I think we need to RFP it because of the.
Okay, I was just asking, I mean, but it would, they'll do the whole project just so we know how much money we're gonna have to spend soon. But I was just letting you know, it's gonna keep leaking. So we're getting water loss and then, of course, expense along the way. I'll just let everyone know, we have a large repair coming under there.
But I would, I would RFP it because of the expense amount that it is, I mean, if everybody concurs with that.
Everyone fine with that, so we kinda see where we're at.
All right, I mean, it's at a level that we need to get bids.
And then I know someone talked about Christmas bonuses. Um, so I know we were supposed to amend the personnel policy, and it wasn't to say May. So it is, I know you, technically it can override me, but I'm just asking, can we please, there's five of us, pay it for seventeen fifty, and like I said, we're using, 'cause we have an unused Public Works position that I'm using for overtime for Loretta, and then it would be the seventeen fifty for the Christmas bonuses.
Just thought of the group.
I have a question on that. Um, so how will that be paid?
This, 'cause Dallas had told me the way to do it is figure out what their taxes would be, an FRS, then make the total of the check that amount, so after the deductions, it's three hundred and fifty dollars for the employee.
That's what I was afraid of. So just so you know, that means that you're paying the employee much more than that three hundred and fifty dollar bonus.
What, do you have a suggestion?
Um, I read the policy that you pay the bonus three hundred and fifty, so it would be an additional three hundred and fifty in your paycheck, and you're paying taxes on that.
See, and that's why we went and go to banking, get cash, or get gift cards, correct?
Traditional, we've always done.
Well, that's not at all how it reads. It says your three hundred and fifty dollar bonus, and you can't pay an employee without taking taxes out of it. So it would have written all these years, um, net three fifty after taxes, is what it should have been all these years. I'm, I'm just saying, you're gonna have some of these employees that, that three hundred and fifty is now gonna turn into, what?
Six hundred.
Six something, yeah.
Like the FRS and all that. And that's.
Do we have, do we have to take FRS?
That's why you paid it with a credit card.
Okay, so we don't have to pay FRS, let me retract that statement.
To pay your taxes, yeah.
Right, so, so the taxes, I think mine obviously are the highest, and I think they're like, yeah. If I'm the one that'll be the worst off, so, but I mean, why would Dallas say that, though? I mean, he's done it for seventeen years.
Oh, yeah, a lot of companies do that. I mean, I've done that a million times, but the point is, that's not how it's written, um, and you would have to get the approval from everybody. It should have been net after taxes, three hundred and fifty per employee based on their current tax bracket. And that's not at all how it's written here, and that's probably why you guys were buying gift cards all those years, and that can't do that.
So the other choice is just put the three hundred and fifty added to that payroll.
Oh, no, separate check.
Huh?
Separate check.
Or a separate check, but then taxes taken out of that three fifty, so it nets less than three fifty, but it's still a three fifty bonus.
Correct, 'cause you roll that into my paycheck, I might as well just not even get it, 'cause it'll all go to taxes, so. It's okay, I'll, it's all right, it'll help the other employees.
Well, same, I mean, you say that, but, I mean, the taxes would be the same no matter what at the end, you would still have to pay that.
Right, they would pay it at the end, just like the tax table isn't even working in QuickBooks correctly. That's why we're trying to hurry up and so we can get over into Edmonds. So, you know, we know for the Medicare and the Social Security, but for the taxes, you know, you have to go to the table, try to, yeah. So when I talked to Caleb from Paul and Jones, he just said, in TechNow, I think by legal, he said, if I'm correct in this, that it's still the employee's responsibility at the end of the year to true up. Yes, we should be doing our job as the employer, but, you know, if we don't take out the appropriate amount of taxes, is how he worded it to me, that, you know, the employee would true up at the end, either owe or pay, you know, get a refund. Is how he explained it to me.
So he was approving the idea of just separate check with a blank three hundred and fifty dollars?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, the amount of money that you take out for taxes, you need to make sure you're depositing that exact same amount. And then, you know, anyone's year-end tax is a true up in some sort. Um, you know, you didn't take enough out, you didn't have enough dependents, um, so I, I would think that's what he means by the true up. But it is the, I'm not gonna get illegal, it is the responsibility of the employer to correctly withdraw from the employee's check the correct amount of taxes based on their W four that they submitted. And that's where you end. If they submitted a W four based on how, number of dependents and everything, and, but you need to calculate it correctly, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion, or do we wanna do by consensus and give direction to our city administrator? Huh? Three fifty, pay the appropriate taxes on it, and don't let the gift horse in the mouth, not being sarcastic, but. I mean, I'll say it to John or any of them, it's better than, you know, saying nothing, but.
When you revise your policy, make sure you say net after taxes.
And that we certainly can look at that personnel policy, 'cause I mentioned it, and you already admitted that you didn't update it, so, okay.
Um, the Public Works, I'll just review it again, we got some three applications, we're gonna, well, it's gonna remain unfilled at the moment.
Okay, okay.
Then part-time city manager, Mayor Hope already moved, it says one applicant on here because that's actually what we received that has everything.
Full packet.
Ready to move forward, you know, to whoever needs to go to.
And I didn't mean to jump the gun, but I was just surprised that you had that many interested parties. You know, I didn't think we would have that, so.
Can I make a comment, 'cause it's around positions? So do you have, like, an employee, new hire employee package that you invite the employee to fill out?
It's not a package, it's not a package, but yes, there's forms that they have to fill out. And then, um, I usually either show them where the personnel policy is, or if they need a copy of it, I can give it to them, a lot of times they don't, Public Works doesn't want all that paper, so if they need anything, they'll just come ask, or we can.
It's part of the orientation.
But yes, yes, we don't have a full, a whole package, so to speak, but we need one, I agree with you.
So as a new commissioner going through this just recently, I know you emailed me asking, like, for my W four, which I hesitated because it has my social in it, but I still emailed it to you, shame on me. And my date of birth was in an email, 'cause you were trying to get, you know, everything finalized. But I really think you, that shouldn't be done via email and, by any means. Yeah, we should not be doing that, and shame that I even submitted it. And then that was the only information, so do you do I nines?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to write this down. Every single one of your employees, you need to go find an I nine form from them, and if you don't, by tomorrow, first thing in the morn, or, it needs to be done. It's proof that I'm allowed to work in this citizen, yeah. Okay, let's hope you do. And, 'cause I didn't give you one, 'cause you didn't ask for one, I was thinking, like, I, I thought maybe you were gonna give me a package to fill out. That's why my first question. And you're not gonna put these in your employee folder, you're gonna keep these on a separate folder. And the reason for that is when you get audited, you don't need all that information in it. It's not a requirement in your employee packet, um, file, so just keep them all in a separate file. If you ever get audited, you can just go to them separately. And so you don't, so not everything gets audited. You try to keep some things separate, so that's the reason for that. But, yes, make sure that gets done.
Include the commissioners, too.
Yeah, any, yeah, anyone that's getting a paycheck, thank you.
Um, one more repair, just real quick, it was a few months or so, the city manager, Public Works, had ran over the feeder bed and had messed up their mower. So I was just confirming, I know we talked about it, I think, but anyway, so the repair minus her service was two twelve fifty. We're gonna go ahead and do a check for Wednesday, do they all have any concerns about that at all?
No, it was our liability.
I'll just double check.
I don't.
'Cause I remembered some of the conversation, but I can't remember, I don't think there's any vote or any, I mean, I know it's way within my limit. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I don't wanna open this up where everyone's gonna be submitting stuff, but I almost paid it hard. That was the only reason I had.
As long as it's clearly delineated with Ms. Ott on chart of accounts of what that is.
Yes, sir, it will be.
So that is our responsibility, though? Because you could be opening it up.
It's hers and our, theirs and our words, so I really, I mean, there's pictures involved. I, I mean, I don't know what to say on that one.
I just don't wanna open us up to a lot of other things.
That's why I wanna open it.
Yeah, 'cause what you do for one, you gotta do for all.
Okay, so our joint BOCC meeting is February ninth, okay, at six P M. Let, let, Latoya, right, Gani, yeah, reached out. So does anyone have any conflicts with that at all that you can think of? It's our normal February ninth meeting, so it'll be on a Monday.
Let, let's just have our, oh. I just don't know what I'm about to say.
Well, now I know.
Have everything together, how we gonna be paying that?
Yes, so we talked about the twenty-four audit, so I'll send Commissioner Fiori the spreadsheet if anyone else wants it, just let me know. There's still needing a lot of documents, so I've been working on that. Well, I will be working on that. It's due November thirtieth. And then as, I just put as far as I know for the twenty-five, it's probably not gonna be till second quarter, a twenty-six. Because, you know, we have a goal to get everything entered and then we'll have to get ready, but it's been a good experience, because I haven't been this involved before. So now definitely know how the files need to be and what all needs to be, da, 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 da. So it was a good experience. And I just put the list of employees just, just because, so everyone knew our names and what department we work in. That was all for me.
And then if I could just share, again, from just, uh, old business, Mr. Lewandowski, I'm looking at you, speaking to it. I ask about our timeline. I don't know if you've got any feedback from our voting clerk superintendent or whatever about when the charter review and the amendments would be presented for our referendum and our vote.
Yeah, we're almost going.
It would be the, it would be the, the two-year cycle coming up in November of twenty-six.
Talking about the charter, you're talking about.
The charter, the charter amendments for the City of Archer.
Is that for?
Yeah, sure.
Is that chair now?
And that's the latest from the day. I don't know if you heard any update, if it could be.
Yeah, so I just want to, I don't wanna get mixed up between the charter and the, um, and the land use ordinance changes.
Charter, charter review amendments.
Yeah, yeah, because those are two different things.
All the work that your committee did.
So the work that that committee did, that was completed back in March, I think.
Yes.
So it's, uh, it's been through legal review. I believe the lawyers presented it to you, didn't they? Didn't they give you the draft? So it's sitting in your laps, uh, for you guys to take a look at and review and vote. There's gonna have to be some changes to it, because we had made some assumptions on when it would go, because that's going on ballot, obviously, that'd be advertised going on the ballot. So you'll have to massage some of the dates that are in there, uh, but it's, right now, that's sitting on your lap.
But that, that vote for referendum for our citizenry will be midterm twenty-sixth November.
That's, that's what we put in there, yeah, as long as you.
And I learned today that every amendment has a cost to it.
Correct.
Just adding the charter, you know, review amendment is one item. It's every amendment item has a charge.
Although, one of the things I asked attorneys, I never really came back with, is essentially this is a significant rewrite of the charter, it's almost like a new charter, even though there's a lot of things that's sold over. And my question is, uh, there must be a process for when there's a new charter. And perhaps you could go back to your colleagues and research that, because I can't believe that if there's a new charter, that it has to be such a major issue, uh, in terms of advertising. There must be some way of having this thing published in toto for people to review.
But I, I agree.
Yeah, and I, and I, it would make things a lot easier, because there's a lot of questions and a lot of issues that we try to address in a new charter that I think will help. Commissioner Green and Penny sat on there, so, you know, you guys can have your own opinion on it, but I would like to think that we, we made some changes in there that would make, that makes sense.
That's why I brought it up. I just didn't want you to think it was laying stagnant without some plan of action moving forward.
Yeah, it would be nice to see it passed or at least somebody talking about it.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney report, anything to report?
I have no report.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Ireland, Commissioner reports. Anything for the good of the country, Madam Newby on the dais.
Sick of me yet? I just, I do, I don't have a report, but I have two questions. We were provided a letter, um, from the Presbyterian Church. And I don't know where that fell and, because it was not on the agenda. And also, former Commissioner Joni, she has certain tasks that she was helping with. Um, I think she did maybe time card review or, um, expenditure review. I would like to be able to take on some of those, um, tasks that she was helping with. So if staff or mayor, if you come up with things that I could help with, I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Just get with Deanna and anything that is amiss, because Ms. White isn't there besides being the primary check signer, because I bug them to death now. And I'm, as your words said, there can't be that many checks and there's not from what's being done. Y'all are being very frugal with, you know, but I checked with them twice, twice a week, three times a week, so they got checks between Monday and Thursday, um, you know, for review and approval, so. Um, but certainly time review or whatever, that would be helpful when you can find the free time during their work weeks, so. Any feedback from Ms., have you ever met Ms. Ott, the new specialist?
I was in the office for doing the qualification document and, um, she was sitting there, so we were able to say hello.
I mean, she's, yeah, she's gone from a steep learning curve of silence to now she gives some input and it's, it's refreshing.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. Yes, I look forward to that. Um, and I will be in touch with Deanna, because, um, I want to take some days off from my normal job. I would like to shadow City, um, Works. Mostly, I, I don't even know all of Archer. I've never been around every single corner of Archer, so that would be like my first goal, I would like to do that. And frankly, I've never met the, um, any of the employees, yeah.
That's nice, thank you. All right. Commissioner Green?
I have not, oh, I'm sorry. I don't have anything to report, other than, um, at the same place you were this morning. It was very nice.
It was shorter than in the past.
Yeah, yeah.
Started late.
Yeah.
And ended early and I don't know.
Yeah, and that was at the Veterans Day celebration, um, over at Oakview Middle School that they did this morning.
Schools, middle schools that provide a veterans program and recognize someone.
It was very nice. I just suggested to them while I asked the dean, because I think there was only like about three veterans maybe stood up and they were playing the different tunes.
Smaller group.
Yeah, and so I was, I asked that, you know, I asked the dean, I said, well, how do you all go about selecting your veterans that you invite? Because I'm sure a lot of these kids have parents that are, that are veterans. And she was saying something, yeah, and she's, or, or acting. And she was saying they, um, I don't know, go through the band keys or something and select them, but there's only about three, maybe four to the most, uh, veterans there.
Sponsored that since the very beginning when my younger son, Paul.
Yeah.
One of the first years they did it, that was in two thousand and one.
Yeah, because my niece says one, she's a veteran and her son goes there. And I was talking to her about it, she said, I didn't know anything about it. So I'm gonna suggest that to them for next year.
At the administrative level, they put out notices, yeah, or something.
Something, yeah, so the parents know, because I'm sure some of the parents that are veterans and active duty would have been there. But anyway, it was nice.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing. Um, I thank you guys for excusing me last month while I was sick. I did receive an invitation to a second biannual gala, but it is for Saturday and I'm gonna be out of town. It's Neighborhood Housing and Development Corporation. Commissioner Penny asked me if I was going when she saw it. I told her, nope, she can have it, I'll be out of town. So, um, this is the first time I've received an invitation of the sort. So I'm not sure what goes on there, yeah.
That's all. Anything else?
I, that's fine. Nope, that's it.
On paparazzi, yes, yes, she gotta take some pictures.
That's how you learn, that's how you meet people.
Network.
What that's doing.
Stick that camera in front of them and boy, they start talking now.
Right.
You went to Micanopee?
Oh, I did. I went to Micanopee's, um, festival and I, I guess it's a fall festival. It was awesome.
They do a very nice job.
It was awesome. And I forgot to bring the booklet, because I did grab a book, because I want that for us. Probably, of course, we can't start, you know, with such a huge festival, but we can start. It was lovely. They had vendors of every single type. Well, nobody invited me to Magnetosh and I don't know, I don't know about that. The mayor from Hawthorne did invite me to their fall festival, which is December. She said she was gonna send me that information, um, but yeah.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Penny?
I did go to Micanopee also, but I went on Sunday. And I'm with Vice Mayor Bailey. They had like a hundred vendors.
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred. And they had, and I was picturing we might kind of do, they had some like street performers, like playing different music. And if, because you had came up with something like this earlier, um, Mayor Hope, to have the different bands in, in the park. And we can kind of do it, kind of like that, because some of those, um, people, you didn't have to pay them, they got paid by tips that the people who was listening to them.
Like minstrel groups and then just put out the donation hat.
And as they was walking by, some was playing the guitar, some was playing, it was like three guys, they were playing their instruments.
So you were entertained all up and down the street, yeah.
And then they had a band over here and over there. But a lot of them, I wanted to see if we could do it like that and then charge for the vendor. And because they, I don't know how long they were there, but some of them had, you know, the, the cash in their little tip jars.
So the mayor at, um, Micanopee said, these people, they set up for the entire weekend and they, they put for those two days. So they were there the entire time. So they probably switched out people, but they were, each vendor was there the entire time.
I couldn't even wa, I'm so lazy, I couldn't even want the whole thing. But, um, what I did notice, some of the vendors are repeating and then some of their vendors, um, like, um, the National Church had with their vendors, a lot of crafts and stuff, so. I don't know how they charged or how they made money, or did they just do it for free just to bring the people into Micanopee? Because it was a lot of people. It was a lot of people. And when I talked to the mayor in Micanopee, she said, oh, it's dying down now. I was like, ugh.
There's been years, so.
Right, it was very nice. And I also participated in the trunk of treats.
Oh, I did that, because I forgot.
Yeah, and then I also went to the meeting in Hawthorne for Lautre County, um, League for Us. And.
Thank you for doing that.
And I also went to the NAACP, um, um, gala. And I wanna say that one of Archer Own was not, um, was got a reward, not a reward, but recognition, Dr. Rutledge. Um, she got, um, um, recognition for that. And then I think she got another, um, for that one, for the, um, the National, um, what's it called?
Greater Gainesville Organizing Group, National Coalition of One Hundred Light Women.
Yeah, so, and she's, she's from Archer also. And then I went to a breast, um, cancer thing in Bronson that they, um, I don't know, they, they didn't have a great turnout, but it was, um, more people from Houston than I know. Because one, I remember she spoke, because she's a cancer, a breast cancer survivor. So, um, I went to that. And then I went to the Female Protection Anniversary, again, um, it's, it's church related, but it's a lot of Archer residents is a part of it. Our own Kalida is a part of it. She, um, helps with the food drive a lot. She's a part of it. Ms. Rutledge, Little Rutledge.
Michelle.
Um, it's like six, about six women from Archer is a part of that, so.
I am too. I just am not active like I should be.
Yeah, they do it to me. I'm like, I don't know. They, they do a lot. So I went to that also, um. That's it. Did that. That's all.
Well, like Commissioner Marilyn Green, I went to the, attended the Oakview Middle School Veterans Program today, um, and it was very nicely done. Proud of the Archer representation. Always, when I'm at Oakview, you see a lot of the Archer students there. Um, I also met this afternoon with our representative Chad Johnson, uh, regarding just more of an inquiry than, and putting something in his head and asking for, by exception, any consideration to be able to, uh, reach out and utilize any part of our one point two five million dollar appropriations from last appropriations year. By letter writing, by exception or whatever, to, uh, go towards the wastewater invoices that have been paid, um, and showing on our line of credit. He took notes, was interested, said he'd get us contacts. And I said, nothing hurts. I mean, I, you know, I don't mind hearing no if I just have those contacts up in Tallahassee regarding that. And again, all by exception, because it's not normal, but he did look at the invoice, I mean, I had detail of invoices and things like that that, that we've paid to our, our previous engineer of record. And he seemed quite interested. He did ask about you, Commissioner Fiori, getting kind of, crowned to be in tonight, so news gets around, so, uh, and spoke highly of you, so, um, was pleased about that, so, about your, you joining us. Um, and then I also am preparing for a meeting on eleven twenty with a Zoom meeting with Deanna Folsen Walker and our Wood and Kern Engineering Planning Entities, uh, to prepare for Senator McLean's meeting that will be done on the Monday, the twenty-fourth with Senator McLean, just regarding what are our current statuses with our wastewater regional planning program and plans moving into twenty twenty-six. And so, um, two, I think, pretty critical meetings if we have the Wood and Kern representation there. And from what I understand from Mike New, it's going to be the planning side, his superior or whatever, that will be participating with us as well. I'm looking at Deanna, but that came from, from just communicating with them today. And then, like I said, on twenty-fourth, there'll be, I don't know the exact meeting time yet, but there, it will either be in person or through Zoom with Senator McLean. I think Mr. Senator McLean will be at Folsen Walker and then whether we participate by Zoom or, or present, um, will be determined. And that's what I've got thus far, so. And I, I, just relative to when I said that they would, all due respect to having those chat and chews and those town hall meetings. I think once that information is captured, not to try to make it around the Christmas month, but there, there would be an opportunity for us to have a town hall meeting with enough information, where we're going, what direction, new, new person on board up here with us on the dais and direction that we're getting in participation with that, to have a town hall meeting, um, in December, late December, like between Christmas and New Year's. Huh?
Late?
Yeah, I know, it gets between Christmas and New Year's, no participation, but who knows, some people, they, um, but that's kind of my plan for twenty now in January. All right. With that, uh, public comment period, last but not least, nine twenty-five. Yes, sir.
Good evening again.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lewandowski.
So just a couple of quick things. One is that, uh, Ms. Green, I, I, I hear your comments and I get it, but I also like to relate to you that if you, you sit in the audience, I know you've been in the audience before. You folks do wax eloquently on and on sometimes. And so while I understand some of your frustrations with some of the citizens that come up, you guys do talk a lot. So it's a two-way street. I just, I, I just wanna make sure you understand, it's a two-way street on that, uh, because you guys do a lot of BS. I'm, I'm just giving you some constructive feedback. The other thing I wanna say is that I, 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 even though I have criticized some of the things Deanna has done, not her personally, but her position, okay, because there's some of my concerns. The responsibility, I don't hold her responsible, I hold you responsible for that. So if she doesn't have the resources that she needs, it's your fault. If she doesn't have the personnel she needs, it's your fault. Not because I think you're bad people, it's because you're the commissioners, you're the government. And so if you go back and look at Florida statute, the Municipal Home Powers Act, you look at our charter, your responsibilities are laid out pretty clearly. You can delegate jobs thanks to her. I mean, you supervise by, by law, you supervise that position, but you can't delegate that responsibility. So things like, oh, I don't know, you know, city managers running us into the ground, not, not her obviously, but the former city manager running us into the ground. Now, he was derelict in his duties, at least in my opinion, but you guys have responsibility for supervising that. Us going into the financial emergency, you have responsibility for that. You know, when I ask for things like, what about having a financial dashboard? I've lost three years of my life waiting for you guys to do that, you know? So it's, it's those types of things. And in terms of the ethics, so I understand the ethics briefing, you have to give everybody their three minutes. That's good. But ethics does not dictate whether or not you should be responsible to your constituents, responsive to your constituents. That is not the ethics part of it. So if somebody's telling you, well, you should never answer back to your constituents when they're up there asking questions, I, I understand how you want, you want to make sure that you want to give everybody free time and you don't want to draw things out. But it's not unethical not to respond back. That's just good government. And, you know, we have enough nonsense government going on at the state and the national levels. Here in Archer, we should be a shining example of good governance and good responsibility and, and good community relations. We should be that building block for the rest of the country. I know that sounds kind of idealistic, but it has to start somewhere and it should be here. This should be good governments. This should be good financial responsibility. This should be that open dialogue. We don't have it anywhere else in the country, unfortunately, so let's start it here. Thank you.
That's true.
Thank you. Mr. Lewandowski, while she's coming, I think you misunderstood me. I didn't say not to provide answers. I said that each and every one of you ask your questions one by one. Then we will address them after all of you all have asked a question. We could jot the questions down, but we can't just, you can't just come up and ask a question, want to answer, ask a question, want to answer. So that was just my suggestion. Everybody, everybody asked their question. Then I said, we will respond once everybody asked their question. So I don't want you to get the impression that we're not gonna answer your question. We're not just gonna be interrogated asking your six questions one by one. So that, that was my suggestion. But I'm done. I just didn't want you to misunderstand what I said as though we didn't want to respond or answer. It's just that for, 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 so everybody, so it can be fair across the board. Everybody asked their question, which I shouldn't be responding to you right now because the Lord is standing. So.
Thank you.
I break in my own room.
And I think he was talking about my comment, but I'm going to do like we said and let everybody come up in their three minutes. Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm not, so, so I'm not talking about a specific comment, but you, but you have, but you folks have.
It's a pledge right there on the front of that.
Yeah, you guys have made numerous times over the past several months, you've referred back to the Essex training, okay? And you specifically said as part of that, that you have been advised, probably not say instructed, but advised not to answer back.
But that's, that's why I'm gonna speak after we're done because that's not what we are saying. So that's miscommunication. So we, I'm gonna clean it up. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lewandowski. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Costello, come on down.
Lori Costello, citizen. Well, I really hope that I get my questions answered tonight. So I will be waiting after citizens' comments for y'all to answer my questions that I asked earlier, okay? And I hope you jot, I hope you jot at them down. Okay, so I appreciate when Mayor Hope tries to answer the questions when we're up here. I really appreciate that and I think that's the way it should be. We're Archer. We're not Gainesville. We're Archer. There's no reason not to answer questions when we're at the podium. If you read your agenda, it says right here, everyone has the opportunity to be heard and responded to, okay? So. I would like y'all to consider a five-day work week. The packets are a problem. For people that work, they don't put the whole packet on until maybe a couple hours before the meeting, okay? Like, for example, the Public Works Report, they have 10 days to work on it. There's no reason why that report can't be in on a Thursday. All right, there's just so many things. If you guys go back to five days a week, they can get it there Friday before they leave. All right. Also, Public Works, was there two windows done at City Hall? Were, were two windows repaired? Because their report says that two windows were repaired. So I would like to find that out. And I'm going to, even though you made a big deal about public information, I think four and five months is a bit ridiculous to be waiting on public information for anybody or any position. If you read our public, our public records process.
By statute.
Not per statute, ours, the city of Archer. Okay? It says in a timely manner. Four or five months is not in, by any means in a timely manner. And it, it, it's, it, you know, it's like you ask over and over and over and over again. I just, I'm, I'm waiting to get my public information. Let's see. I'm, so I'll be waiting. I hope y'all wrote down my questions that I asked just now and earlier. And I'll be waiting for your answer right here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Green.
Anne Green, and I don't speak as eloquently as Preacher Pisco because she was talking about increasing our water and our waste. You know, y'all gave away the farm. So when you give away the farm, the taxpayers have to pick up the tab and this is what we've done. So I beg you to go back and look at our structure for the community center. It was to be a, a money-making project with a manager to keep it and to maintain it and you gave it away. So please go back and look at that again. We wouldn't have to raise water rates or waste unless the company, unless Waste Pro raises and we have to go along with it. But please look at that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.
Wait, wait. Hold on, hold on. First of all, I do want to say I agree with Mr. Lewandowski about all this extra talk. We need to stay on task, get it done. We could have been gone an hour ago. Anyway, so you are right about that. Number two, what I, I say, we don't need to be answering every question or we don't. One, we don't have all the answers, but when you go through the ethics training, they instruct you that it is in your best interest to answer when you are certain about it. And especially if it is a public, something that could be a public request, things that are written, things that are documented that we have, so we can answer those. However, we don't have to give the answer right then, especially if it's something we don't feel comfortable with or need to check into. I did agree that I liked, I want to say Pastor Green, Greens' idea of everybody speaking. We, then we answer whatever we can answer at the time. But the point of the three minutes is to be fair, to give, you know, and you, and I've said this, sitting in the chair multiple times, please continue, state all of your questions or concerns so that we don't have to, because if we're, if you're standing there waiting for us to, to answer your questions, what we're supposed to do is even if we're answering your question, we're supposed to keep the clock running. So that's why I always say, let them finish, let them have their three minutes. And then we speak. And I feel like that's the best way. And then to Ms. Green, Waste Pro did increase their fees. And I think it was, was it last year or earlier this year? I feel like it was last year, Waste Pro.
I believe it was last year.
Yeah.
It was last year.
Yeah. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. This meeting's adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Folsen.
It just came to me.
It's okay. We're here. Yes, ma'am.
These meetings are going to take as long as they take. You're saying that it could have been finished an hour ago. I was an advocate of two meetings per month for this very reason. Now, if it's till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, I'm going to sit right here until we get it all out and everybody has their say.
Keep moving forward.
Y'all and us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The point is, I agree with Mr. Lewandowski that there is a lot of extra going on up here at the dais. And if we are asking you guys to focus on the motions and what, what is going on up here, it's not fair for us to have all these sidebars. That's what I mean. So the meeting could have been over an hour ago. Thank you.
And I will publicly say to Mr. Lewandowski, I don't know if I've ever done that, but if I have, but if I have, I don't think so. Maybe I have without realizing that I did it and I apologize. So I don't try to disrespect people. That's, that's not, that's not a part of me, but if I have done it unintentionally, then I apologize.
Okay, anyone else?
My question.
They've been. Ms. Costello, they've been duly noted and especially those things that have taken four or five months.
No, my questions that I asked tonight.
About five-day work week?
No. See, y'all get right in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Deanna have your question. Deanna have.
Deanna, anything you.
No, I asked about windows. I asked.
The window, hold on Lori, the window, Kelvin texted me, it's the same window. It's the window where Tangy sits. They had to do two different things.
We cut it down there twice.
Because they had to do something and then come back and do something else.
Do something else with that same window.
The trucks. I asked why the trucks.
Take a ride in one and that'll answer all your questions. They're extremely unsafe. I do not want them driving those trucks at all. They're, they're scary. Like, I think they should be surplus. They're awful, so.
Automatic lock?
Yes, I'm working on that. Contractor came out and working on the final quote to get the commissioner approved to submit to the county for wild spaces funding.
And wild spaces, wild places.
There's just no reason, just unsafe trucks.
I'll have to get the specifics. This is what Vice Mayor is trying to talk about. I'd have to get what's wrong with all these trucks. All I know is when you pull out to the road and it stops, I'm done.
It stalls and traffic is coming.
And like nonstop. And the other one's just a scary.
And that's what you shared with us last month is that you were in the truck.
At all.
It stalled with traffic coming and that's unsafe. That's where that comes from.
And we've spent so much money. These trucks are like 20 and whatever years old. It's just we're putting money into a POS.
Five-day work week. Because that was one of your questions, was considered during the budget process and remained at four days at this moment, my vote. It remained at four days.
Four days.
My vote. Okay, I think that was all the questions, except the four to five months of public requests. If you could share with me.
I already did. I emailed all of you.
Not recently, since you've returned.
Yes, I did. I emailed.
I haven't received it. I'm sorry. If you could just send it back again, would be wonderful. All right. This meeting's adjourned at 9:44. Thank you.
4:44.
Yes, ma'am. For that clock, I.
Oh, Jesus.
Yes, I emailed.
Yes, I thought you just did that.